He was the oldest. He was seventy, well, he was sixty, sixty-one.
Yeah.
He grew up on, here in New York.
Okay.
I own a lot that he grew up on.
That's awesome.
Wayne, so Wayne County auctions off property after the demo.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna buy anything with the structure on it. This has got, this is, this is lead, lead and yeah, environmental radiation. But, um, so anything they knock down, they gotta run through Wayne County treasure.
Energy exchange treasury, yeah.
And for the last ten years, I've been one or two lots a year of fifteen hundred to three hundred thousand. And there's, there, I just, there's sunflower, I put sunflowers.
Yeah.
Hopefully, uh, for do this whole business.
Yeah.
No, I, uh, I'm running the board at this, this fall. You remember the honors thing last year?
Yeah, I know.
I organized something, that was me. I, I'm friends with Rebecca, uh, Rebecca, Rebecca Han, you know her? So I'm her.
Oh, Rebecca Han.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know her.
Yeah.
I went to her house.
Yes. He's joking, he's joking, everybody knows Rebecca.
Yeah, he, oh, first time he said his name, Rupah, Rupah.
Rebecca.
Rupah, first name, Rupah.
Yeah.
Awesome. So what's your name?
Alex.
Oh, you're Alex.
Yes, I live stream and record all the meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially these meetings, they don't record these at all. They do record the board meetings during the school year, like September, May.
Yeah, um, so do they, um?
I, I did the SAT tour. Yeah, I did SAT tour on Saturday.
Ooh.
Yeah, that's.
Has she got a picture of you?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have, um, chat.
Oh, you're in the group chat this year?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
It's good practice, uh, even if the student, a student doesn't intend, I record it on YouTube. I have an iPad where I use the pencil and they see, you know, records the screen. So when I'm solving the equation or solving the problem, they can s- they can see how I solve it, which has my voice. So it's good.
And there is our YouTube link.
It's amazing what people do with technology today compared to what we do at school.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Troy Community Center, room three oh one. So this, Saturday, March ninth, Saturday, March sixteenth, and then the following week is spring break. So I don't have that. And then, uh, Saturday, April sixth. I believe they're taking the SAT in school, April sixteenth. Of course, students, students are gonna take the SAT probably more than once. They're not just going to use the score from the school. But the goal is to have the students score better in SAT math. Uh, in, in Athens, uh, for the last few years, forty-five percent of the students scored less than fifty percent on SAT. And I would like them to, they discuss, the board discusses academics results, uh, in, from the data perspective. Once, usually it's a term, I think, I would like them to have them change the curriculum for both, uh, this past spring, uh, spring twenty twenty-three. They changed the English honors, they eliminated English honors in it. So if they change their curriculum and we're in a critical period coming out of COVID and the score, they should be, I think, discussing their results a little bit more frequently. They also have tools in schools, um, it's called N W E A for, uh, achieve for academic, uh, for mathematics skills. It's an internal, internal elementary tool. Uh, so they have that, I, I think they should, and those results, from what I understand, are instant. So I believe they have the opportunity to discuss student achievement more frequently. I think it's critical we do that to get the kids back to where they were before. It's now being Detroit, all school districts, I think, are going through this. But the board does have the power, uh, and responsibility to make sure that the, the students, uh, we get them back to where they were before. So can you quantify people learning or pastors, graduates, people learners? I, I just find it very suspicious that they base decisions on a value that can't be quantified. How do you define success, quantify it, right? It just seems.
Do you know a few days ago for some, maybe the Sierra and Shent, uh, high school camp and?
Yeah, they discussed that in the last board.
Yeah.
That is here.
I'd say, uh, I believe the state, part of this from the state of Michigan, they, they, uh, introduced in, they changed to the environmental science curriculum. And so I think the, uh, that was, they're adjusting for, for that part, they're adjusting for environmental science, or they're making an elective change, at least from what I understand. I also got to read it, 'cause I'm not a senator for all the SATs though. College Board changed the AP Physics exam. So I don't know if the change that they made for physics is in response to the change that they made for physics exam. They changed the units around.
The dad, uh, what would you learn? If the kids were told it, you have to register post and one, two, just one semester, which means you have to spread out to that last two years.
Two years.
Two school years before you are able to register AP chemistry.
Yeah, what about Oregon? I, I love Oregon, I'm a survivor.
Yeah, I mean, the point, the point is, um, the best thing.
You know, if, if.
Be any form of, you know, split one or two, blah, blah, blah. That's fine, but you shouldn't, uh, stop if kids wanna advance, you know, faster.
Yeah.
Doing that. Well, meanwhile, I mean, if, if they are the same last year, right? Those kids who already started, um, who can actually, you know, start in period, I mean, you have, um, people afford. And kids cannot, you know, who cannot register any kind of classes yet, but they have played for two years.
So with the, the changes that they introduced, when would you take? What grade can you take? You need to talk to the president.
Yeah, I mean, they, they just, it's a surprise to a lot of kids, you know, to be great, well. I believe they are all the same class year, but, you know, some will be able to take AP Chem this fall. For others, because they already take chemistry, uh, their first year of high school.
Okay.
High school.
So the earliest they could take AP Chem, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth?
Well, for last twenty twenty-seven, if they do this earlier, they can, for, take AP Chem is your senior.
What?
It's your senior year.
For physics?
For, for both, I mean, if they have not started chemistry or physics.
Yeah, let's.
Because each school year, you can only register Chem one or Chem two. But each is point five practice.
Okay.
You cannot take both within one school year.
Okay, so.
I believe you.
Let's say you take Chem one freshman year.
Yeah.
Chem two sophomore year.
Yes.
You could conceivably take.
That's for the new freshman, right? The for the current.
For the new freshman, you need one year bio, and then you choose one semester of Chem, one semester of.
No, you didn't have to.
And then you, yeah. And then they have in biro science, half a year less.
In the, in the current framework, what is the earliest grade that you could take AP Chem?
I mean, people in my grade, class of twenty-five, take it.
I have freshman.
And I also know people who take it sophomore year. They just need to have their requirements of Chem to.
So with this change, does that change? Or is it, does it push it out or not?
I think, I think Chem is only gonna be one semester. If you can't want that two in one year, you'll still be able to take it.
Okay.
Because what they do now is having one Chem, I took one Chem, but they combined it as Chem one. Now separate, just to have a division.
Is it one semester, is it a full year?
We actually did a full year, but now we have it in one semester.
And then in conjunction with that, they introduced this environmental science class, it's like.
Environmental science.
As an elective, like.
You have to.
You have to take.
For the option.
But that's only for the freshman.
So, but everyone going forward, that will be the standard framework through which, I mean, progress. So it's not, so could you do, well, you could do, um, Chem one, your freshman year, Chem two, your sophomore year, plus the environmental science.
You don't need Chem two.
You don't need it.
Oh.
All my people just take Chem one and they don't take Chem two. Cause that's what I did.
Okay. So that, and that had, that's not changing. Like you, you now have the flexibility to, you still, student freshmen today have the flexibility of enrolling in AP Chem just by taking Chem one. Like you just.
I think, you need to take AP Bio, which, you need to take Bio, but they like recommend.
I took G P B.
Yeah, so if you take Bio, like you, I think there's something changed in the past, there's no Chem two. Chem one is four year.
Right, she said that you don't have to take Chem two though.
Well, that's before.
Right.
But now, do you require in four years chemistry before you are eligible to take AP Chem?
Oh.
Just like before. So now it, it called it the second point five chemistry, Chem two. But Chem one point five, Chem two.
Second, is that?
And you can't take it twice, you can't take.
You cannot take both within one.
In the same year.
Yes, correct.
So you, you, let's, you must take, well, you, you must take Chem one, your freshman year. She's, but now you have, you have, she said you didn't, she didn't have to take Chem two. Now, do you have to take Chem two?
Well, if you are not going to take AP Chem, you don't have to take Chem two. But if you wanna register AP Chem, Chem two is pre-referenced.
I did take Chem two.
Yeah, but, but how many, uh, how many measures is that on Chem one?
One, two.
You guys are the experts with that.
Yeah, but that's the point I'm making, your past Chem one is four years. Now Chem one is.
There are ones related to.
There are ones, but for Chem two.
So now you are sub-morals.
Yeah, but Chem one before used to be like a full year course. You can want Chem two in one year. All they do is, it's not adding anything.
No, they're not adding anything. So right now, Chem one plus Chem two equal to bigger than one, just like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they separate Chem one, so two parts, Chem one, Chem two. And if you, uh, you don't understand why they did that.
For, for two of them?
No.
No.
How do you judge?
You're a little ignorant. Why? So, okay, did you ask this? No, okay, so I can tell you physics, why they did that. It's because the people who are very, very deep in math, they will take physics one. The, the people who will do physics two, will continue on physics two is because their math is much better. So they want to help the kids with these remaps here, and these will still lose the master of physics. So I think the same thing, so this is what the teacher told me. So I think the same thing applies to chemistry. I would say thought process behind it. So they are trying to care for all the students. So if you're strong, then you will continue on, um, this, uh, Chem, uh, physics two and all Chem two. But those who are not, they, they have option to leave. Before, they don't have the option to leave. For physics one, that's only is, uh, physics two. Right, but that was what the explanation told me, the parent teacher comfort, you were trying to explain why it can't be, but you don't have to. They are, they are also considering that. So that was explained, I think they did a full chemistry now, but physics, they come back to that here. But that was the explanation, the difference between physics one and first math, first physics two. The only difference has to be math. There are some a lot more problems that are passing physics.
Yeah.
That's what the teacher was explaining.
It's just give the option.
The, the rationale for the, with the, yeah, I think that's why they did it.
The problem is for kids right now who is freshman.
Right.
Who has not started chemistry yet, right? But they have the plan, calling to, you know, the senior students, right? They learn from them, they make a plan. But now, you know, for many kids who have not registered any chemistry yet during their first year, starting now, their second year take one.
Right.
Third year take two, AP Chem is your senior year. And, and then they, well, I mean, I guess if you have, have a long, you need summer activity, but it's chemistry or whatever, right? You have to wait after senior year, after you administer college.
You can stay college, right?
Right, so that, that's a part of it.
There is a reason that was, that.
I mean, if, if I would wanna make a change.
Yeah, also starting from freshman. So that's what we're trying to do then.
We're not making, yeah. People are scoring current.
Nice to see you.
Yeah. Blue Ash. Always, I get told.
It isn't.
Oh, all right.
It doesn't sound like if they.
I'm checking. I haven't seen it yet. We won't get that.
No.
So what is?
No, we won't.
It's a part of the. I think that's part of it.
We won't, we won't be programmed. We know what we need financially, they know what's wrong, so. Uh, shoot. Hey, Red, do I, uh, Paul, do I have your present?
I have your present.
I do.
No, I don't.
I can bring it up on.
Let me bring it up on.
Okay. All right, what is this fancy device? It should be a.
I don't know what that is. It's a bomb. Is this art? Is this? Is this yours?
No.
What is it?
Let's see if it's. Is it art? No, it's a, Chris, do you know what this is?
I believe it's.
It's a mic. Here, we don't want a number two. Okay.
Hello?
First, let's see, we had a seventy-five, eighty percent capture rate on the six percent. Again, it's still worth, um, that little big word, child that's in the third grade group, but when you play that idea of course, four things you'll see in eighth five is all six hundred eighty-six individuals. Oh, you'll see it. Take the. Your parents.
We're kind of tied to comment.
Does that take that nineteen thousand, we take one step further, so there's eleven thousand. But again, you can't see like, I started to think. Um, so again, you look at grades nine, twelve, thirty, four hundred students. First, virtual academy. That base is fifth, data. Again, as you compared last thousand, being last one hundred, that's what we said. Right inside, um, again, this shows you some of the total households. In your place, very low vacancy rate here, just one more. I don't know. The two thousand nine hundred. It just determines vacancies, so again. Here, pro tax, so the household really comes very strong. This is just more of the middle population. Five. Three. So people ask me, why is that happening? We're gonna look at the top five lines here, so here, back in two thousand ten. Um, again, here we are in two thousand twenty-two, so there was a population growth in twenty-twelve. But again, we're starting to see that level off. About one percent. So again, not a huge increase. I think, well, trusty Schmidt, we look at that, five percent. I had an idea. Just only have fifteen minutes, but we have this. Um, period, draw back down. So again, this is like, so we're gonna talk about, maybe go back to two thousand ten. You'll see the total level on the far right side, twelve sixty-two. Actually, one twenty-six. So a slight decline. This is, we'll see is about twenty-eight, thirty-five. We have a real job. The next charge is beyond highs, right? Back in twenty-ten, it was over a thousand. On that population project. Oh, sorry. Again, catch roughly. Three times a bad time. Their casualty here.
So. Why is it, so if you look. From twenty-ten. Twenty-twenty-seven. It remained about this.
Yeah, so you'll see this real quick, I can see the live birds.
So it means just for that time.
We'll start one for P is, we still got next grade toward one. And this is ultimately shorter than. For, uh, it's across every cohort. That milk. And so. And yeah, I think, see there, um, you said.
Yeah.
Those are set size. My school's.
Audrey?
Yeah, that's. But yeah, this, I was gonna say.
Just small pie.
Right, that is. Slightly, tie is still there, it's just. So again, how does a primary role play during all projections? If we have our birds, because these are on the side of the health services. Um, we won't have the twenty-three numbers yet, but it should be out in the next four, four, six weeks. Um, and. You're sort of, and thinking to. That's seven years on the table. On that. Certainly, other than payment. On national, at the last, we use our J graph. And then at the end of the day, today, we can beat our projections, point six four percent, so we're looking at a percent accuracy, but again, it's still a double D practice. Do, do you know what you're doing? Um, you feel?
We are, do you have some developments across the state?
Yeah, so again, we look at.
That's accurate, not equal.
Give an example. To question last question. Isn't that? Hundred percent. Be sure that's having, as in, five. That, I put on. It's like, I, possibly, I'm. Not gonna upset.
Right, right.
No, I, you know, two thousand holding.
I didn't think it would move that way, I just was curious of whether that was a factor.
So I would, this line, so we've been doing this since two thousand, two thousand, actually. Some, you know. So, that's the highest time over. There's a hundred three thousand. So, I guess. Well, pretty much out. So first. Think about, the first Michigan, so. There you go. For friends, little half. Um, you scored a fifty, eighty-seven. Uh, as you. That's half. So you know, that's a, that's a, all security auto. Um, again, the, the, the orange line is kind of how it presents as a capture rate. So again, six point five back in, um, fifty twenty-sixteen. Again, two thousand eighteen, that's what you. Get a lot of it is just trying to make. That's your. It ain't good, and all that's clear.
Um, so right by that, two thousand nine. In twelve. In the, oh, answer my questions.
So, you, you pick up on.
Yeah, sorry, right, so that's why we're losing, just how the guys are back up. Likely to have coming in this hour.
So again, this is a lot of, public information.
This is high chart.
On the. So, probably around twenty. We go all the way down to the very bottom, that common sphere, thirty-seven. And also, please touch. Oh. This is your whole, um, call it F P health.
I guess that's.
So then you gotta go to twenty-nineteen, again, see. Seven, seven, twenty. Um, that was at different time, five, five. That previous slide, that five. I, probably, I'd say this one. So again, we have thousand birds, twelve thousand five. Quick cash at ten. Coming. Five percent, I should say, just here. So the pink lag or blue lag, you see like two percent of the way, okay, and there's a store of that. So this again, a lot of, treasury. I don't need to worry that for five years, who's our project? Oh. Can we project, you'd be eleven thousand six ninety, there are eleven thousand seven ten. Population run by thirty. So again, we, we appreciate that. Her, who can use here, on, on the eyes, with. Five, six, eight, twelve. Um, so look at, look at your academic program, correct? So, what is your target? Say, twelve. Right now, you have four. Perfectly, took that seven hundred. Your utilization is like, just trying to. Little school level. Honestly. Honestly. Little school, you have taken that population. One seventy. It's, uh, four. That's very helpful to those. And if you, if you, as you progress, as you're going through the design and construction, you know, it's not a, it's a. And obviously, high schools, um, when they just graduated Catholic. I'll say, you know. You probably have some partners, you guys work. High school. So those channels, those spaces. We had to take this chart, um. Further.
So that's. Five, three. If you follow this way, then. I, now, see, here.
You have some research, I actually gave this more question. I think, you know, here, Brian, just for this is just more of the, I do projections, um, so. Boo. Uh, nine five is top, again, you're. Seventeen, that's about forty-five hundred, forty-four hundred, uh, twenty-eight. Middle school, six eight, and passing. I thought. Forty-five. Four hundred and then square it up. So that, your, that will, questions, and that's thoughts. Presentation. And so. That's good.
No, this is a, it's a nice presentation. So. So, yeah, I, I have just, yeah, for things, uh, of baseball. You all have a chance to see, follow up to these slides in my. Follow up that I had provided in. So as we think about next steps based on, on this, on the presentation again, Paul, thank you very much. Point zero eight six, was it?
I mean, nine point six percent. We're almost four hundred.
Now, now, you're regular. Respect.
We'll, we'll.
Really appreciate. So based on, based on Paul's, uh, the demographics, uh, and projections, looking at opportunities and, and next steps. To share with you, so. Operations, uh, so, but we're, wanna target that eighty, eighty-five percent, um, in. Based on, uh, our numbers taking out five years. At the elementary level of infection support, continuing, full elementary. Um, our high school numbers, also, following out of place at Detroit High. See, uh, is working for us. Numbers we're looking at over five years. Where there's an opportunity, uh, is, is, so as we think about new Smithville school, new Smithville school coming out higher. That's a nine, six. Uh, two, two pieces that I, that I wanna share with you are opportunities. First, that we use that as opportunity to consider balancing those schools. Support agricultural construction. So by that, I mean, when, when we have a, a school, let's say at eight fifty, for instance, if, as we have them, it's close to that six number in part. Students at us, it does create some challenges. Action collective law. And it minimizes. Opportunities for students in that, it's more like, uh, it could potentially even impact a number of students in collecting bicycle. Struggling, so, so, so we have an opportunity to potentially balance those. Might want to take advantage of, or at least look at it as an opportunity. And the, and secondly, is to investigate our current elementary pathways across the district. Set the, uh, to consider how our current elementary pathways, for some families. Uh, uh, splits, I mean, uh, Detroit Union as an example. Do you take or Detroit Union, some of the students will. Go Larson and Athens. And some of those students will go to Smith and Troy High, and some of those students will go to Smith and Athens. So that's a, that's a W Smith that we have, split that we have that has been problematic. Have looked at it, first of, uh, several, several years later. We looked at it twenty-six. At. Yeah. So.
There were like thirty of them, this man.
Right, and so that's, and, and we think about trying to keep peers and so forth, go that transition a little. And then, and then actually the high school, that those are two biggest transition points that our students have to make. Our. So next steps, uh, be a recommendation, I would be recommending for the, it'd be in a, 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 starting next fall. It's facilitated by a representative for Plant Moran, uh, along with Rick, uh, who would manage that from the district perspective. Um, key individuals in that will be Christine and Chris and Ken, of course, as, as the next are programming at the middle. Um, key individuals in that will be Christine and Chris and Ken, of course, because, as the tax are programming at the middle, uh, for secondary elementary, and of course. Vacation is going to be enforced, so that will be our, our team. Uh, we will seek to present recommendations, provide recommendations to the board around. Set us up. This is, and that will be Christine's, we got to be practical and, uh, you know.
...is it would give us the need starting. There's a whole analysis of your packet that suggests that the four mil hedge gets us at least seventeen years based on historic. Okay, so I think we're in pretty good shape. We hedged last time, we hedged from seventeen up to twenty one. Yeah, right back. The hardest part about it is explaining it from between now and...
Yeah, it's an easy guess for the board as long as they know.
Do you remember what the last hedge, the last one has probably been like?
Uh, yeah.
This one has pretty heavy...
Yeah, second, seventy, somewhere in there. But we did do some communications about it. And the last one we coupled with, so that was...
So, I think we have a question.
More challenging.
Like, why do we want to do it that far forward?
So we don't have to go back.
So we don't have to interview that.
So, doesn't that take away from future board members to make that decision themselves?
But it also provides sustainability to school districts. It provides long-term sustainability, I would think this would be a further... Here's that, that you've taken that out of...
I can't see how future board would say we need less money.
No, I'm not saying that they would say that they need less money, but I would want them to make that decision and not us.
Well, I would think, I would ask you to revert, kind of change your lens and say, you're solidifying this for the school district. You're providing sustainability and sustainability through this school district level.
But what's the average time they've always asked for in the previous...
Ten years is two.
So we have to double that now.
But this is something whenever you go to any of those, like, any S P days, that they assume they're just eighteen months.
And I anticipate that, I anticipate that we would get it over time, I'm just wondering about how loud you are.
Yeah.
Anything, but, I mean, future board would want to make that decision and not me, it's what I'm...
But if, future boards are always going to not, to stop letting, we just because...
That is fine, but that was the choice of the board to get that board there.
Yeah, I would think that you wouldn't want a board that's in that position. If you, if there's an option not to...
The boarders will put them in that position.
Our job is not to protect future board members and future boards, our job is to protect school districts.
Right, so, I, I get it, but it's still the public school, it's still the public's decision to do that.
But again, we just funded a thirty year plan.
I get it, I know, I understand that.
This wasn't an argument last year, so...
Our recommendation would be a twenty four year plan.
What I like about that is if we want, if we need to go out to the board for something else, at least we don't have this other thing. It's like, just clear the, clear the back, so that when we do have to go in front of them.
So, at this point, what our boarders are going to, what our boarders are going to be taxed at is the same rate as, first of all, it's not most that I understand that. But, but the businesses are going to be taxed at exactly the same as what they are right now.
Correct, right. It's just the same as the eighteen...
Eighteen mils and we're saying...
Forever.
For twenty years.
Yes, for twenty years.
Unfortunately, this is the reason it's bad.
Yeah, that's actually good to take care of. By simply saying, in perpetuity, not most that may be at eighteen mils in each, in each community. They have yet cho, they have not yet chosen to do that, so it becomes a process.
What for every school district?
Process that districts need to go through.
And you want...
Yeah.
Yeah, and you do, you want to do this in the land, where in August?
We want to do it in August.
You want to do it in August.
You, you are going to vote for what you want this August for.
Yeah, 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 we have the time, we have the time, so let's go.
Okay, good. So, does that, will we have a legislature, does that go to consent or...
Uh, we could put it in consent, uh, it's prepared, it's in...
We should probably not, because that's the first chance to talk about it.
Okay.
See, who said put it in consent?
I'm not like you're...
Okay, two seats.
Two, he waddles abatement.
You're extreme on topic.
As best as abatement. So, we're doing a flooring project that waddles and we need to abate there by law. We have good coverage and...
I said I was done with it, the kids can deal with it.
Sorry, sorry. I didn't intentionally, wasn't it? But, no, so thirty two thousand, we have great coverage and abatement. So, but, oh, but...
I do have a comment though, and this always comes up, like, this is the lowest, and it's the second lowest, I get it. But it's a huge difference, a jump of thirty thousand dollars to the next one, why?
Um, you know...
I thought you were...
I thought you were about some of you. I don't know, you know, I don't know the answer to that. I would say, that's typically the case, they just throw a price out there, but the actual anomaly was a little bit, so when we focus...
The low bidder on this were only three thousand dollars off.
No, I know, but it wasn't the rest.
And then the rest of them were all over twenty thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, so, so typically, um, we see a little bit closer gap in the lower ones and not, not in the higher ones. So what we do at that point is we make sure that the scope of work is solidified through the bid process with the low qualified bidder. We qualify that bid and we make our recommendations, so we make out, we have their bid, we've solidified it, and now we hold them accountable for the work.
Have you done this work with any less than sure?
Um, I believe, I don't know.
What's the consensus?
Are other schools involved?
I don't even...
They could be involved or could be...
That's just...
Something like this?
No, we're not looking at it. We don't have any other projects right now.
No, we're not. Where there's asbestos and Troy, you can first...
We abate when we have projects going on and that require, so right now, the only project is...
Says the contract, okay?
Yes, yes, and it was, um...
When we get to Troy, you want to...
Yeah, yeah, so there will be, once we, more or less, it'll be...
But for this part?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, okay, cool.
Wayne, this one should excite us, um, uh, it is, it is fiber, but it is...
It's a lot.
So, it's a, it's actually a, it's a secondary, um, and I think this board has wrestled with this particularly with the last fiber outage. This is going to create redundancy and reliability within our system. And this is where fresh perspective always helps, you know, Troy came in and was like, he came in the day that that pole was hit. We interviewed him on the day that pole was hit over in Walz, and we had to shut, shut down. And, uh, so, you know, kind of through an annual interview process, we asked him...
Ask him about tolerability?
So, he came in, he evaluated, he found this opportunity, and he instantly put the bid out with E-Rate. So, what we're proposing here is to, to go with, um, through People Driven Technologies, which is a company that we've worked with. They have proprietary things with Cisco and, and the equipment and stuff, so we want to put a layer, layer on fiber process, fiber, um, network in order to assure internet connectivity and their network fiber, essentially. So in order to do that, we have to buy these switches and these routers, um, and extenders, and that comes with two hundred and seventy to ninety thousand dollars. Through the E-Rate process, our anticipation is that we'll get forty percent refund on that product. This would be a bond expense, I think that would be well over, so on top of the internet, our address of fiber paths, we're on our push.
It's just going to be more, it's going to continue to be more.
So, now, for how long, just looking at, what is the life of this?
The life, um, I would have to get back with you on the life.
Be worse if the truck hits the pole.
When the truck hits the pole, now we're protected inside our building, that's what this is doing. So, um, I don't know the lifespan, I want to say ten years, but I'd be...
It says, the comment says the previous one was put in service twenty years ago.
They're not reliable, so, so...
We might get twenty years.
Yeah, I'm guessing. Yes, like, I'm doing my own...
But, I'm putting in seven fifty-two and then sixty percent of that is what we're like with the R.
About four hundred and forty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So I see it's a three-year maintenance contract.
Three-year maintenance, yes.
So after that...
We would look to probably renew that, I mean, it's, it's the same as our fiber maintenance, similar to our fiber maintenance, so after I go to get, I would bring you the other time.
Yeah.
Okay. Furniture purchase. Furniture purchase and some minutes, uh...
And I have, looking at, um, the, this, and then I assume the following, the, or potential for, or the potential common, of what comes to be out of... Um, I would be interested to know, you know, of the bond money, um, what is our one rate so far, how much total would be, um, approved?
And we...
Okay, I mean, what if we were to, just in a total, like a... It doesn't, I don't need that answer to know, but we have, since we have four to five items tonight. Where are we in terms of our scope of, uh, one percent of the spend?
Yeah, so, a couple things are coming in, our capital maintenance, our capital projects budgets, typically, you would see in June. Yeah, um, so that gives you the dollar amount that we would anticipate it spending, and our audit always audits those numbers as well to suggest. So we usually do that on an annual basis. If we want to do it on a project basis, we can, we can look at that.
It doesn't, I don't need that, but maybe next month, I would assume that we're going to have something else to say, this is where we are.
So when is the schedule though? When is the schedule happen? See, annually is that right?
Annually, it would be part of the audit.
It'll be June, yeah.
It'd be part of, it'd be part of the audit, yeah.
But we'll see it in, in our...
We do, we actually don't bring the capital, capital projects funds, budgets to the, to the board and audit base. However, we, we give you that spent to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I got your cover.
Can I have your two bills?
That's how you're covering. Here's the numbers here.
I can't wait till tomorrow.
Okay, so here's the furniture.
So, this has been a well orchestrated, um, project by, by Kristen and her team. Uh, we have gotten to the point, I mean, it's been a process of very much collaboration, similar to the playgrounds and all of that. Um, and we are at the point where the selections have been made and the recommendations, and we're, you can see we're looking at five point seven million dollars worth of furniture purchases, um, coming to the board. And this one, so...
Has it shifted much, if any, from what we saw earlier in the year?
In terms of the material or, or what are your...
Uh, in terms of the furniture selection.
Okay, so the team had provided feedback, we have twenty-four teachers that are highly, highly, twenty-six, but the total...
Because we were able to see some of them when we did the tours.
Yeah, exactly, so they kind of came up with grade level packages, so they made consensus around the first grade package, and since it hasn't changed entirely, some of the brands of chairs that the bigs locked in and things like that.
But it should look pretty familiar to you.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
You'll notice that the spend at the elementary is, we had, similar to the playgrounds, try to keep that spend consistent across the two halves. Yeah, the, the elementarys, and then, of course, the middle school, or the, the, um, Baker and then I A, uh, are more stairs, bigger, bigger facilities, so they're updating more rooms.
Fair chairs.
Yeah, fair chairs. So then next year, start the furniture. We'll have the other six, Smith, or it'll be all, it'll all, everybody, yeah. The Smith furniture is partly, is part of the, the entire Smith.
But it'll be the, the entire...
The elementarys.
Right, but are we going to hold off, um, Larson and Stollman until the rent out?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. As well as right now.
No, try to start, start now.
So like, otherwise you're going to store all that furniture, so, when you do your rent outs.
And add in the way. Right, so, but I think one of the exciting pieces of this furniture approval is as we move up the furniture, there's enough furniture from fourth and fifth grade that was purchased new ten years ago, about ten years ago. The fourth and fifth grade furniture is full-size furniture, there's enough to completely re-outfit current Smith, which has very outdated furniture. And so we'll use that fourth and fifth grade furniture at Smith, which will then serve the Smith kids, the Bowler kids and Larson kids as they go through that Smith. And then, next summer, so we do it with the next six elementary schools, we'll be able to use that furniture to update Athens as Athens awaits. So, those who will have to wait the longest will actually get our best furniture that's being repurposed, our best old furniture before they get new new furniture, so...
Yeah, okay.
So you're saying the old middle school, we get the elementary school, fourth and fifth grade?
The best of the stuff that's been taken out, we're going to have to...
Until the new Smith middle school is built, and those guys will get the brand new.
Correct, yep.
Any questions for, for others?
Okay, Rick, okay, now. Okay, foundation still, so just to, did you...
Yeah.
This is, this is, it was, it was actually on the agenda, then off the agenda, now, as of this morning, we had a meeting, we had a meeting, um, to, to discuss this, and I elected to put it back on because we are ready to go. We have established the orientation of the building, the building will be from, will be north to south in the east part of the, west part of the...
Gym on the north side, and classrooms on the south.
Okay.
So your entrance, so your entrance... Your windows are going to be...
Your front, your front door will be north facing, right?
Facing March Out, all the classrooms will be facing...
Korea. Which I think is probably better.
Okay, so we, we've established that, the reason we were going back and forth is we got soil borings back and the land is not that great. So we're going to have to geo here for our foundation and, and such. So we were going back and forth, I originally, uh, through collaboration, up to the pole, because we didn't think we were ready this morning, we've solidified the decision, we thought we're ready, and as such, this was ready to go anyway. So we said, okay, let's, let's see if we can work with the board to get this on. So, this will allow us to get this project going as soon as possible. Uh, along with, there will be in the next couple of months, they have to, uh, design the, the geo beers for the...
Key.
Yeah, um, and, so geo beer, I, I learned today, is actually a brand, so it's a specific brand, so it's really just filling the holes with concrete, uh, and compacting it.
Tell them what the boring is.
To make, because I don't...
Do we share that with...
Yeah, the boring, the boring is found sand, essentially. Uh, so, and it was, it was throughout the whole site. Now, we originally did borings on where the original orientation was, and it was pretty compact land, it was, it was pretty good. When we decided to reorient it, we had to re-soil bore, and it turns out that the best guess is that we used, uh, when the old Smith was built, they pushed off the sand over, over to that, and the... For a future board to deal with that. So, so we, so we had eight to, you know, throughout the whole site, we had eight to ten feet, twelve feet in some areas of sand. So, um, they're, they're currently awaiting a whole geo report, I guess, to see how significant it is, and then they can design where the, where they need to, uh, do this process, which is just filling the holes with concrete, compacting it, and then making sure the footing and the foundation can set, set up. So, um, that's where, that's where we're at here. We got favorable, um, why we wanted to not wait on this anymore is because these were actually just our responses. Responses, so you can see, we got nine point one million dollars of work through the foundations, through the structural steel, and through the, say, demolition, so. And when we, we talk about demolition, we're talking about the tram, we're talking about the fence, and so, around, um, down there. So, um, so with, you can read the recommendation, that we would be, um, bringing that forward as a, as an official start of some...
Will you take a, hold a few, a picture, a drawing or whatever, to show the orientation as, as it shows to the general public?
So, yes, we will, and we will, we will actually send that to you, we should include it in here. Um, we can and we will, uh, also worthy of note is we met with, um, the Sylvan Glen subdivision, who's going to be most impacted by, um, perhaps besides Florence and that street, their house of deliverance. Um, we met with their community, we were invited into their homeowners association group last night, had a very positive meeting, were able to address some of their concerns, that they, that at least answered their questions. Um, and we went, we went, gave away, feeling very positive, they were, um, they were excited about it, and they, uh, we had at least some affirmation of the fact that this is the right project, uh, to do, we had a couple parents there. So, a lot of excitement, and we are going to avail ourselves, um, I've committed to avowing self to answer their questions on an ongoing basis, but, um, I think that's, we're going to avail ourselves to the community in those type of forms as, as much as possible, because I think it's really productive to have all of that, have, have those type of questions answered.
Is this in line with what, what about the last, the...
Uh, yeah, yes, in fact, this, this is one of the areas that, uh, my understanding of it, so, um, we have...
Make up.
Yeah, we're going to make up for it, this, this project will not be under budget in aggregate, but, um, still, we were very happy with the results of our project.
So I know the, to, to remove all the backfill and recompact everything was going to be a million dollars or so. What was, did you have an estimate, a case on the strategy, I know it's less than that.
Four, I think it was about four hundred, four hundred thousand is our anticipated...
When it was, I'm going to have to take it off and then bring, that wasn't even...
Oh, that was just to remove everything that's there.
That was just to remove it.
That was about four hundred thousand cubic yards.
Incredible.
I mean, and then, couldn't fill back yet. We'll have to fill back yet, so, you know, it was totally possible to do that.
Preliminary, we have John Drakey scheduled for May, September.
Yep, that's the beginning of May, we haven't confirmed with the building yet, so we haven't sent anything out, we have to make sure that we...
We're going to send the show, but...
We will have it. We will have it, and we'll get that information out.
Have some more fencing, right?
Oh, that's next, that's next. Thank you for the excitement, I'm really, uh, before we, just before we leave...
I think you could see the excitement.
Before we leave the Smith project, it, it should be, it should be said that, uh, all along, this has been a very aggressive timeline, and things had to line up, um, exactly right. In order for us to hit a fall twenty-six opening, we're, we're fairly confident based upon this newest issue with the, with the borings, that we are not going to hit that. So, we're looking now at alternatives that could include a, a, a second semester opening, so, uh, January twenty-seven. And latest would be fall twenty-seven, so latest would be fall twenty-seven, a year behind, we, we may still be able to get the, the January, uh, or the second semester start for the, for the school year. But, it didn't make any sense for us to continue to push our team to meet deadlines that we know, we knew from the very beginning we're very aggressive. Uh, and particularly when you consider the, the, um, uh, the issues that projects, that we've seen on projects with steel, the electric switches that you already approved months ago in preparation for this. Uh, we, we have, have a lot of things lined up just right, so we're better off re-establishing our expectations so that we're not over-promising on the deliverance.
Um, so, that's, I was going to ask about the pre-purchases that we made for S D O and stuff, like, what does...
Electric.
So, we had that coming, oh, go ahead, finish it, perhaps.
No, that's, I was just like, how does the pre-purchase tie in with this stuff?
So we asked that we, we're hopeful that the electric components of purchase will now be available, which will save us the temporary stuff that we were anticipating having to put in. However, that's seen on most lead times as we reported when we... However, that's swing and most lead times as we reported when we were harder anywhere from a year to three. So we're still within that timeframe and this certainly provides us more of an opportunity to get those in because we've delayed it by six months.
But it's not a guarantee.
Perhaps, well, but it was still not guaranteed. I pushed that issue this morning and they indicated that.
It's not like to show up like two years early and sit there or something. Along with this, this is kind of, I mean, I first looked like about Smith. Can we, and Chris is not here, but can we have the district make announcements about the ways that construction products are gonna be influenced traffic flow? So like, one, I love the bond signs that are going up places, like that's really fun to see. But I had people, the parking lot that a lot of people pick up at Athens is closed as of this morning and there was no announcement for Athens, so people were like, now they're like, get my kit. Like there's a lot of frustration. So if we can just like help proactively communicate where construction is going to need to change traffic.
Yes, the availability, isn't it?
Absolutely.
I, I, somebody should do it, but like if we.
Oh, I appreciate that.
It didn't happen, so if we can get, like if we can have a website that says like, this is where you're impacted. Part of the bond work. Kind of like the, where you get in the, what is it, the Troy, you know, the Troy Times? Not the Troy Times, the, the catalog that comes for the, oh, yeah.
The community, yeah.
Yeah. But they have the, oh, in the back, yeah. In the back, you always have where the construction projects are gonna be, everything planned.
Troy today.
Troy today, yeah. They always have the painting that's coming.
Yeah, I love that.
I actually look at that.
I understand whether that's in that box.
Okay, okay.
Okay, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'd like some fencing in that place.
So any questions on that?
So I'm happy it's not ninety thousand, too.
Small.
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah. Definitely construction around a middle school and I want fencing for twelve-year-old boys and construction side.
We have a time where when the concrete comes down around the retention fund at Athens.
No, we're gonna get to that.
That, that age.
Age, like, incident. Do you use your language, you'll see the invisible ink. Age is the retention fund.
Just quickly staying on the.
Oh, gee, I'm sorry, okay.
Staying on the Smith project, just real quick, thank you for mentioning that. That was the most important highlight. The other one is, the biggest tension coming out of last night's meeting was, you know, getting, getting in through litter. Okay, they don't want to come in through that one, so let's just understand. Right now, we're going to have to until the time we get an equal permit to cross the drain. Okay, so there's that drain and that's, so that's, that's about a four-month process we're gonna be able to submit. That could be up to a four-month process. We're gonna submit and then make sure that we continue that. And but if we get the steel and stuff in coming in, we may have a temporary time where we're coming into Donelson. That's going to be the biggest concern of the community, which may rise to your, your level. We assure them that it will be temporary and we're gonna get it until they're ready. So I wanted to mention that. Moving on, and this is, we will get you this information. So you guys approved the retention fund work at Baker, Leonard and Athens earlier this year. That work has commenced and in fact, it's almost completed at Baker and Leonard without, without exceeding the contingency. You come to my attention today right before the meeting that we have exceeded the contingency amount for the Athens project. I'll give you the recommendations for basically the soil and stuff that was, as excavated and stuff was, was that and we had continued about twelve hundred yards along suitable soil and we haul off in the same way. So there are requests and others that we can have for additional disposals in that work. You probably can speak to it better because you've been experiencing, experiencing the work and it's transforming.
Look at the head area.
Well, that's, I sent everyone a picture of it, like, do you remember when? Because it was like a mountain of dirt. It was like, holy hell, but it has, you know.
So all that has to go.
What is on suitable soil?
The rubber floor was completed and so.
I think it was, there was so many trees in it, like it looked, like it looks like.
It's a purple.
They need to go put that on the Smith property, so we need to fill in the sand. Because nothing's going through it, that was the problem.
Solid clay.
The taric clay. I'm gonna send you those.
What was the contingency amount?
Twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars, so seven percent.
So this is almost thirty percent then, but it's fifty, seventy thousand additional.
Yeah, so as we've mentioned before, we're very transparent about the contingency and we're very specific and at this time we missed it because we didn't anticipate it.
Even more clay for us.
Based on the size of the trees that were in that retention fund, I don't think that retention fund would have been very, 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 very large. Like I, when they.
I didn't even know it was a pond.
When they did, I was like, oh! I assumed they were touching pot, but on the other side.
So is this the one between the church and the school?
Yeah.
Jazing hole that.
Yeah.
It's like a ditch, but it's.
There's a lot of trees.
Not anymore. It's amazing. You can see the sun.
Okay, so that will, we'll formalize that into a recommendation and ask for the additional funds.
But that's a need for required, right? It's not something we can't.
So when we put a bid out and the bidder bids on this value and how, what is the, what is the requirement on their part? And then they need their homework or we can do a.
No, no, we identify a scope.
Okay.
We identify a scope of work and when you're dealing with land, that's when you're, it's, it's higher, there's unknown when you're, when you're getting into it. You know, we didn't anticipate this unknown, but we anticipated about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of unknown and this is an anomaly of a situation. We've done plenty of.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, trick.
Previously, we haven't had any issues like this. But that's a unique, that's a unique. So that's where.
Okay.
That's where that comes from.
Okay.
What are you looking at here?
Thank you. Yeah, I think we take a break here and I will.
And it's not like it could be that much drive by accident, so you don't have your own hand. I thought it was like a new retention. I didn't even know that there was a retention fund between the church and. I thought it was. Any M and Ms?
I like the tradition. Oh, it's interesting because all the people there. How did this, the literature is.
Oh, really?
Ferdinand. It's right in better than. And it's like the hardcore, it's like there's two orders, there's orders of America, OCA. And then there's a little bit of Russian, outside of Russia. Answers to Moscow, Moscow culture.
This is, this is, this is.
How they manage to get trees? How they get different situations? In Troy, Egyptian. Seventeen feet on the right-hand side.
I think you're, you're.
It's an Egyptian, excuse me, Catholic, Egyptian, they were saying.
Yeah.
Egyptian church.
No, she sends, always sends to me. She sends to me and then can't find it. And it's carved out. Very common like this. So usually I will respond.
So it's good.
If, if I respond, then I CC everybody. Anytime I do respond, exactly. And if I respond, I can have two of them respond. They're, she pours into your loss.
It's interesting. Even Google, I mean, Google. We were, I mean, we, we have four engineers, but the engineers, you know, they're not sure to show it. But as they. Was it Clarkson, yes, it was at Clarkson, uh, who was helping to build. And it's two thousand thirteen, it moved to Troy in town. And I, I heard it was.
So can you respond to her?
Yeah, and I, I heard.
It can, it can take some of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those can take a few days.
I talked.
Like a gate to allow.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, no, yes, well, they. Well, yeah.
She would have to jump on it just to be.
You were obviously in a ghost. We have a nurse, she's in.
So there are. No, I mean, to be directly, only because you could sell it to somebody. I may overdo that. If you want to see. Okay, yeah, so next item on, on the agenda is a, a, an update to where we are with the work we've been doing with Nate Levinson and New Solutions K-12. Take you through kind of a high, high-level overview of what we learned through that, who was involved in the process, what we learned from the process and where, where we are in terms of the next steps. Can I ask, out of curiosity, how many have read the forward word? So, okay, yeah, I'm gonna say almost everybody's read the forward word. All right, so I, I will. I just want to see what you're. Almost spent a tremendous amount of time, but I, I, I just hit on some of the highlights and Chris, Chris is gonna, is gonna hit on some of these as well. So why did we choose to ju, why did we choose to engage with Nate Levinson and New K-12 Solutions? There were a couple of challenges that, that we were, that we've been dealing with as an organization and quite frankly, I've been dealing with since I started in my role. And the first of which is, is I reference the silos. There, and it's not unusual for in districts as large as ours to have departments that often, that work independent of other, of other departments. So in this case specifically, I think about how we have a robust teaching and learning department. We have a large special education department and we service a large number of EL students in our, in our school district. Each of those has very significant responsibilities. They service many students and yet they, it has been, there has, it has been a challenge for us over time to get all three of those in lockstep in terms of how we're supporting all students across our school district. So that, that's a, that's a challenge that we've been presented with and we've been working, working toward solving. We also, when we look at our gap, and we look specifically when we look at our, our special education gap, we still, we still see this, this challenging achievement gap between our special education students and our general education students. And over time, that gap has gone up and it has gone down, but it's been a persistent challenge for us. And that is something that we wish to solve moving forward. It's something we have been engaged in with solving, but really digging into that, we were hoping, working with Nate Levinson, that he would help provide some solutions for us as we, as we think through that further. The others ROI, we spent a significant amount of money on, on interventions across our school district for, for special education students, for our EL students, for, for all students. And are we getting the return on investment for, for what we're spending? So that's something we wanted to look at and it just so happened that Nate Levinson does this work across the United States. He does it with high-performance school districts across the United States and I, I peruse his recommendation. We decided to engage. What we value. What we value, as our school system, and this is no surprise to you, we value systemness, it's very important to us, the coherence across our system is important, protecting our core is important. When I take, when I, what I mean by protect our core is our core instruction, what happens at the tier one level, and in every classroom, every day for all students, we want to protect that. We want to make sure that all students have access to a high level of tier one instruction, we want to make sure that students aren't removed from tier one instruction. And that when we think about interventions for students, they are in addition to, they are not in or, or they're, they're not in place of, I should say. Collaboration is one of our core values, we value that significantly, so as we thought about working with Nate, it was about involving others in that conversation, so collaborating around, around his work. And lastly, we believe strongly in best practice, so it's getting a shoulder of experts in the field, and he is a renowned expert in this area. And so that's why, that's why we chose to go with, to engage with New K twelve Solutions. The engagement, you can see, this is what the engagement existed, we started, we started actually last summer, to last spring and to summer, started talking with, with Nate and, and his partner Steve Sandel about a potential engagement. This engagement to, to present day has involved about fifteen meetings, some have been in person, most have been in person, some have been virtual. But, and it has involved over a hundred stakeholders to date, you can see the, the individuals who are a part of that, who have been a part of that stakeholder group. And it has involved gathering data, Nate and his team have been gathering data via focus groups, he's looked at system wide data, to look at our, at our gaps and so forth across the, the district. He's looked at our schedules, both at the secondary and at the elementary level, how we service all students, how we provide interventions for students, he's looked at those. And then he also, they, they also conducted classroom observations, so they went into our classrooms and observed teachers' teaching, they observed students' learning. Because that's an important data point, how, what is actually happening in our, in our classrooms. So that was, that was the extent of the engagement thus far with Levinson.
First question.
Please.
When we, I think, when I, I would add another challenges, I, I know that since I've been here for the last ninety years, our board has had a concentrated effort on students who are not serving. And so I think when we're taking a real honest look at ourselves, you know, we're challenging ourselves to kind of think about, is our ideas, listen, of support, not just as a buzzword, but how can we structure ourselves to ensure, and for all of that center work, work together, well, that's nice right here. While we have significant improvement, and, and we're excited about a lot of the, the gains that we've made, we are, this is still a sub, subgroup for us, and so we're challenging ourselves to kind of think about, what is the next version of the concept? And TSS, to point out, how do we improve ourselves as, as a structure? And so that feedback, the, if the answer was in our direct room, you know, we have wonderful employees here, and yet there's, this is not short of anyone's effort, that's for sure, but we need some outside perspective to take that about our work.
Thanks for saying that, Chris, I appreciate it, that dovetails nicely into kind of how we chumped this work out. In fact, why don't you go ahead and talk about the work stream piece, Chris?
Sure, so I think the, the team has been really helpful in kind of helping us see our system in this, as we, we just had a meeting this morning, actually to kind of culminate since June, what we've been working through. So the work stream, thinking about our first, our first kind of chunk there is building an inclusive team, which we call, referred to as the guiding coalition. And we learned with that team over time about professional best practice in terms of common understanding. Sometimes when people come from other places, or we make assumptions about the buzzword MTSS, that means something different to the core stakeholders, we call it the guiding coalition. And so we established and studied together with the work of Nate, where we, we have stood up to establish what a common definition of MTSS is. And so that's important, I think language matters, it's not, it's not adding more adults to a program or, or those types of things, it's how our system is structured. And having those conversations prepaid from twelve is also really important for us, so those folks, administrators, teachers, people from all different departments, central office, and being able to look at this information in that way. The second part was building an understanding of our current state, and so that, which I mentioned in terms of looking at our schedules, which is, you know, honestly, nine years ago, I don't know that we would have had anything, a lot to look at, you know, in terms of our own, looking at data, there's a lot of things to celebrate. Schedules is a pretty detailed aspect of what we're looking at in terms of what teachers are going to impact kids. And so that was, that was a, a challenge in terms of thinking about what's happening currently. And the third part of that is engaging and collaborating across us, which I mentioned, it actually happened kind of part two this morning. So we're really just kind of taking a collective look at our current reality, in, in terms of what, what will look different for us the next, the next few years in our district.
So what we learned, and those should have had a chance to look at, the summary document that Nate provided for, for the district. The commend, starting with commendations, these were five things that were, that came out, long and clear, he shared this with our entire, entire guiding coalition team. And that, and it's, it's things that you already know, people are working really hard, and they're dedicated, they care, our community has, has great trust in the work that we're doing. We have a deep understanding, he acknowledged that as a district, we have some of the most knowledgeable individuals when it comes to understanding what it means to be, what, what it means to support literacy across our school district. That was a point that stuck with me that he had made. And, and that speaks to, to the investment that you all have allowed for us to, as we build the capacity of the individuals within our school district, it shows. So that was something that jumped out from my perspective.
Before you go further, I want to, because he went on about this in the report, and one of the things that he focused on in the report is that you've done an excellent job of teaching and learning and synthesizing all the best practices in terms of literacy and, and teaching, reading, and, and that we, we sometimes identify ourselves maybe too, too narrowly in terms of how we teach reading. And he was very impressed with, with the quality and knowledge and the execution of our literacy program at an elementary level particularly, so that, I mean, that's, that's no small compliment, all of this, so I think we should say that out loud. Yeah, when I read that, I'm like, okay, well, I believe that, but it's nice to have an outside expert coming and go, oh, wow, this team really gets it.
And just because we, most of us have read the report, and just for the public too, there is quite a bit here about literacy, so, so the district is, from the perspective of a particular population, is really taking, this report and this work really is taking a big look at that.
Yeah.
You know, I did think it was interesting, though, when you talked about maybe some of the terminology you use around, looking at it as a little bit too narrow or a little bit outdated, and that may, have a pretty major link.
Yeah.
Politization.
Okay, sorry, I keep. I just saw, oh, it's not just a misunderstanding, but I mean, he was very clear that we were executing, so.
I appreciate that, and likewise, and in those, bullet point number four is no surprise, we have been, through Chris's leadership, we have been looking, and Natalie and her team have been really looking at the, the MTSS process at the elementary level. And, and watching that make its way through the, the elementary level. And now we are more consistently utilizing that at the middle school level, and we're, and we're investing in pushing that into, into the high school level, so. He knows the progress. Making progress, no surprise, and our strongest is, is at the elementary, because that's where we've invested a significant amount of time and energy to date. But growing that over, over time, and over levels is, is putting us in a strong position. And then lastly, you know, we have, he acknowledged this, that we're doing, we're, we're, as a district, there's a strong desire amongst the professionals to support every learner within our district, and including some of our most challenged learners. This is referenced to, to our categorical programs, so our students that come to us with more significant challenges, we have invested heavily in supporting those learners. Whereas in many districts across the United States, and even here in Michigan to some degree, you know, those learners are, are, those learners are sent to center based programs and, and outside districts, for instance, or in, in areas away from their peers. To, to acknowledge that we have done the work to assure that all students are with their peers as, as best we can is, is really important, and it speaks to what we value as an organization, about all students. And having time to learn with their peers is, is really important, and that starts as early as, as preschool, that we have those EC, ECSC programs at the, at the preschool level, those students are included with their peers in classrooms. To know that it starts that early is, is something that, that we can celebrate as a, as an organization.
So I do have a question, when he, in his commendations, and this was more for me to get that I, the one that he talks about, he do have great understanding, and he shows a proof of a table, which, I don't know if that was showing improvement, and I don't understand why he added that.
The table that was referencing the gap.
Proficiencies, no, it's just a pure table that shows how many represented, if it's proficient or weren't yours.
At third grade, yeah. It, it starts around the most seventies and.
Yeah, so it goes to seven, from seventy-four to sixty-six, and I didn't understand why he felt the need to put that in the.
Because the numbers are so high. I mean, when, when, the other one this month he talked about, we look at the, the at-risk groups, or the, and showing that we're doing better.
Are you asking why he put that table in that time? I think he's looking at all the aspects of it, like seeing in action, seeing people's feedback, seeing that data in particular, that was just a.
I know what you're saying, it's the triple stack.
Yeah, so he's talking about how we're doing a great job in instruction at all levels, with clear focus in leadership and improvement and reading and all of that. And then he sticks in this reading scores table, which shows reduction.
Those in isolation like that, I think that would probably follow the same trend.
Yeah, that's why I didn't.
It's just, I, I.
Why did he put that in isolation, is what I was wondering, he didn't even put the state class.
I do think that isn't part of, you know, just seem to reflect on.
He, he definitely was comparing our numbers to other, you know, so the state trends.
Of course, he was comparing.
Same thing when I saw this.
Isolated.
Yeah, it was kind of isolated, and it shows a downward trend instead of upward, so I don't know why he did that.
Well, at the same time, he, I, 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 this is, and this is why we want to engage with, with New K twelve Solutions, is we want to know where our challenges lie. Appreciate the foundations, and acknowledging that is important for our teams. But we really also want to know where we, where do the opportunities lie for us moving forward? And so he outlined five areas that we, as a district, could consider focusing our attention on. Important to note, and I'll, I'll, say to the group, I'll put all five of them up, there's an acknowledgement that you can't do all of these at once. That, that this is, this is not a race, it's something that we would, we would want to commit ourselves to approximately a three year project to, to solve, we would want to prioritize those that we think are most important. And, and then begin tackling them, so that, I think is important to recognize. You can see the first one is expanding the reach of elementary reading specialists to support more students. Where might there be opportunities to, 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 for our specialists, for instance, to see more students? How might we adjust schedules to allow for, for that to happen? So we.
I think disappointment, though, is just a lot of our students that have, and just to clarify, we were talking about students with mild, moderate disabilities, and then there's a gamut of our special education students, there are categorical programming to students with a learning disability. So these are probably all the students that are seeing their teachers, maybe ninety, you know, two hundred percent of their day, that are just circumbarications. So I think that was really just ushering at making sure that our students have access to reading specialists or those who are highly trained. In some cases, students don't, don't have that access, and so I think that was something that was found through the special education process that we just need to, to consider.
But I think the other thing you talked about on that too, was looking at your time allocation, saying, because our teachers still value the, the job embedded learning from those reading specialists, anything we can do to.
Sure.
Increase access to the, to all our other teachers to, for these experts. I thought it was valid point, where he's like, you've got these fantastic people, look for ways of, of sharing, yeah, serving.
Yeah, the, the themes that emerge from the opportunities are, how we provide opportunities for more students to be in front of the most qualified, qualified teachers for the, for the highest impact, it goes back to the return on investment, right? We, if a student has a math disability, for instance, we want that student spending the most time possible with the most skilled math teachers who can help support that student.
Without affecting other general education.
Right, yeah, without, yeah, without having any, any negative impact on other areas. So accessibility is important, training, he identifies as important, continue capacity building and training for our teachers. Both general education teachers, we're doing a good job of that, we're continuing to invest in that, but then also as we look at our special education teachers, is there a way to help further strengthen their training to be experts in the area of math, for instance, or ELA, or, or English and so forth? Is there an opportunity for us to do that? So it's, it's access, and it's, it's continued capacity building and training for, for our staff. You can read, you know, through, throughout this report in a, in a number of different ways.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that, I'll, I'll add that later.
What's striking on this too, is in his book, he talks a lot about making sure that teaching and learning and general ed teachers have control over the academics, right? And he's focused on that, and so I was very curious to see when he came into our system, whether he could say, we're suffering from the same thing, and it was interesting to see the quotes from some of the teachers on both sides of the equation, saying, it's your kid or my kid, you know, and having special ed teachers saying, I'm not qualified, I'm learning the curriculum next to my kid, right? And, and to have general ed teachers saying, I don't feel qualified to help the kid along, and, 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 so I'm not surprised, but I, I was really curious to see, once he came in our system, whether he kind of had the same things he sees at other places. So it's, and again, you, you can't fix that overnight, but it just means, it's like those communications and, and this idea of making sure that our primary teachers see every student as their responsibility for, 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 for.
I think that's really important feedback for us, because it's the same, when we elect a curriculum, they don't elect a curriculum for eighty percent of our kids, right? So we are, we are electing curriculum because it serves our diverse population, for students that accelerate, for students that are getting like that in a, in live bar, I mean. So I think that's, that it's important to have kids have access to that, and who's being trained and who's.
I think it's a good focus, right? To me, it's like to be able to say, these are the standards we want for every child here.
Yeah.
So when we think, we think about it, Chris acknowledged it, we think about, through, through this report, he talks about mild to moderate cognitive ability compared to our quarter impacted students. We're talking about ninety-nine percent of our students in Troy's district, we're talking about those students that are on the diploma track, the other students that are, they're in our schools, they're going to get a diploma, they spend the majority of their day in general education classes, and they get pulled out for, for, for a variety of reasons. But this is, this is the majority of our student population.
Or not, it's not modified.
Right, and curriculum is not modified, these are students that take the M step, these are students that take the SAP, the SAT and so forth, which is why it's so important to make sure that every one of those students has access to a, a high quality tier one instruction with consistent curriculum across the system.
They're working for the grade level standards that.
You can see the other, the other opportunities, the other three of the five that, that are mentioned there, and I'll just, this is really about us continuing to invest in, in tier one instruction and so forth, and thinking about how schedules support our ability to provide students the supports within that tier one, and then post tier two areas where necessary. He, he did acknowledge, and we've known this, he did acknowledge that where we have the most work right now is, is at the, the high school level in particular. And, and it's not a surprise, and he went on to acknowledge that, typical of most high schools across the United States. Because it's when you get into the high school level that, that specialization becomes so much more apparent. Students move from a, an elementary scenario where they're in a classroom to going to multiple classrooms. And as we begin to specialize in curriculum, it, it becomes more, it can become more challenging for students to get the necessary interventions that they need at that level. Again, it's just, it's typical of what we see in most high schools across the United States. But he also acknowledged there are things that we as a system can be working towards to help resolve that.
So those are things that we're. Great things that were helpful at the secondary?
Absolutely. Looking at our, looking at our schedule, for instance, making sure that our schedule doesn't preclude students from certain interventions that they might, that they, that they most need. So looking, for instance, at our special education students, making sure that we're scheduling those students first and making sure that they have access to everything they need and then you're scheduling everyone else in after that. So that's an example of it, they're not just part of the group that's scheduled, but we, we, we more.
For our cats and folks.
Yeah, we prioritize that scheduling for them to assure that they're getting the, the, the appropriate interventions.
I'm sorry, I appreciate his work across the United States because he can draw on examples and quickly come up with a lot of the barriers to schedule. It wouldn't surprise you, you know, I told that all levels, but I think that when he's able to draw in some of those, he acknowledges the challenges and has a, has an opportunity for us as well. So I think that's the important implication for us, you know, specifics that we can challenge ourselves.
Interesting, it's important that the board knows also that at the secondary level this year, we've made a significant investment in the learning of our principals and our assistant principals and our curriculum instructor, and our department has, in partnership with SolutionTree around professional learning communities, which really begins the process in talking about how do we build a guaranteed viable curriculum across our secondary which allows for us to be able to provide much more rich interventions. Our, our principals throughout the course of this year have come together about once a month for a full day of learning with, um, with a partner that we have from SolutionTree who comes from Indiana, he's out of Lexington, Indiana. Um, he's been building the capacity of our building principals to lead around interventions, to push into these conversations around meeting the needs for all students. So this board is very familiar with the different structures of pathways for students. We've had lots of conversations about that. There's been so much progress over the last decade in this district to looking at how we ensure that all students have high levels of experiences, high levels of expectations. And there was perhaps a structure that wasn't so supportive of that just ten years ago. And so how we work through that has really been thoughtful approach in building that capacity of those peers who, so we've seen some great growth in that this time.
Well, even with, with this recommendation, you know, with the report, there are definitely some things that are more low-hanging type group where, you know, even like number three is having a coherent schedule. Something I'm interested in clearly already.
Yeah.
Have it, so.
Who are the two, I have to know, who are the two that have done it?
Had one.
Had hit the coherent scheduling.
One said Leonard and.
I'm guessing Morris and Troy.
I was guessing Leonard and Hill.
Morris, Larry Morris.
Leonard and Morris, okay.
As I recall. As I recall.
That's right, okay. But, but I'm wondering, like, is that luck of the draw in terms of when they get their specialists? Or is that something you think we could, we could use as a blueprint to extend the other ten elements?
Okay, things in the blueprint. You know, and again, as we kind of improve, we have to get past, build beyond the confines, you know, and be able to think together about as a collective unit of all the folks that we have in specialist roles and how we can all work together as some reference.
I just decided, you know, okay, we're doing it in two buildings, that is possible, we can do it.
Right.
Much of this work requires us to just begin thinking about who, who are the individuals that are best situated to provide the most impactful intervention for students? And how do we make sure we create a, a structure where those students have access to those individuals? And where those individuals may not exist, how do, how do we build the capacity in those areas for those individuals to be there to provide those interventions? So it's just really being thoughtful about who we're putting students in front of and for how long we're putting students in front of them.
And how many?
And how many at any given time?
Yeah, because if that was clear enough in.
Well, check out surprising that, um, you know, having five students with a reading specialist was not any less effective than just having one.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, but then including that with having a coherent schedule so that we should not be provided with.
Yeah, that's the biggest challenge we're building, is kids that have like five opportunities. You know, and who would be other pieces being pulled out because we want to make sure that we're preserving it? Or, and so all the opportunities pulled off that kind of affect.
But it still seems like there is, there is, you know, there's, there's progress to be made in the short term. Short, maybe, and long term. And there are things that could probably be improved rather quickly.
Yeah.
Something like the scheduling that could probably go back to the, I'm sorry.
And then there's other things that are. Natalie's brilliant facilitation skills this morning, we had exactly that conversation, you know, what, you know, we had to first think about these, these pieces and the fact that I say that the next. These are prioritizing our work that's.
Can I ask a question, you may be able to answer this. I was trying, I couldn't get a read, read in his report about the two-period algebra files. Whether he decided it was good or bad, or, you know, he was commenting about not a single kid in there had an IP. But I was like, and so is that bad? And then, does he, like, does he see that as a model that we should, that we should use that as a model for other interventions or what was his take on that?
I think there's a good end of that.
Okay.
There's like a sweetness hour to that one. So I think it's, with the model, because happening, which are going in that class is a strong model.
Right.
We are challenged to ensure that all of our students have access to their resources they need.
Yeah, okay.
To be clear though, it was, it's a pilot course, so it was, it was intentionally scheduled the way it was to see if it could be fruitful before.
Right, well, and I knew it was a pilot, so I was interested to see if he talked about it in the report. I'm like, oh, he's talking about that pilot. And then I was like, I don't know if he likes it or not, so, okay, all right, okay.
But the problem in all of our interventions, well, this is, what was identified as our students with IP are, are often, if not.
Yes, no, I got that, let me talk about that, so it's not right.
That would be, you know, quite awesome.
But he would see that if that's the ideal type of intervention, which is you divide core instruction with a highly qualified instructor in that top, and you give the kid more time.
Uh, what I wanted to recommend this morning, to have Naito's comment, Natalie's, Natalie's facilitation, we talked this morning about what are some things that are easier, and I think these are easy, to implement in most impactful. So we were able to, right, exactly, so kind of that's.
No, it's.
Yeah, exactly, that would be fine.
So that's what we looked at, that's what we looked at this morning with our guiding coalition. So we were asked, uh, through Nate's, uh, the, when last night he was here, our guiding coalition team was asked to consider what are, if we were to prioritize these recommendations, what are the, what areas would, might we prioritize?
And they're doing a good piece well.
Yeah, and we want to, we want to do a few things really well. And so the group identified number two and four from that list of five and.
The older ones.
The older ones, and so what, so what does it, what does it mean when we, when we're talking about number two? It's really about ensuring access to core instruction for all students. It's expanding coaching at all levels. It's ensuring students are taught by contemporary experts, kind of, the most qualified in front of the most needed. And then additional instructional time provided where possible and appropriate. Goes back, for instance, like, as an example, that double block element. That would be an example, where possible and appropriate, we would want those students that most need that having twice a week, twice that amount.
Just to emphasize that, so that's, that's what our team read and Nate is really great at presenting research about what's working and I very much appreciate that approach. The three pieces, and there's three distinct pieces, making sure they have access to the core, ensuring that they're taught by contemporary experts, and if you're providing an intervention, it's adding the time. And we read this in our corner already, that what's happening is we're simply adding time. So they're doing this and so, and so there's no intervention out of the core, so that's.
You build it dependent on your special education.
Yeah, it's not adding to or allowing access to the grade-level standards.
And can I kind of give the first of those, so you really, I can say in front of the report, I had a question on, on the two more that you're writing on.
Well, what, what happens typically, and we review IMPs every year, as, as is required, what can happen oftentimes coming from elementary into the secondary in particular, or middle room to high school is where, where a student might be getting a certain amount of intervention. When you transition that to the high school, the, the amount of time for, for intervention can increase quite substantially, given the, the way the schedule is and the way the students' schedule is situated at, at high school, for instance, versus in elementary. So as a result, a student may have, may not need additional support, in fact, may need our less support. But their IP calls for more support. And when their IP calls for more support, we're obligated to provide that support in some way. So part of, and it's an important question, part of Nate's recommendation that doesn't, is not situated here, but things that, that he's, that he would challenge us to do is reviewing every IP, making sure that every IP is written appropriately, that is providing the best level of support for a student, that it is, that the support is provided, in fact, at first point, by the most knowledgeable individuals and so forth. We, we are starting to see and have seen a decrease in the number of, of students that are identified as learning disabled at the elementary from, yeah. And we believe by continuing to review those, providing students exactly what they need, and it's, it becomes, it becomes a, a document that supports learning versus a, a compliance document that will help us address students' needs, but, but also not be overly prescriptive in those supports we have to provide.
So and that, and that's tied to earlier, more intensive intervention?
That all kids have access to, I think Nancy's question is valid in that.
You get them out.
Yes, you get them in and out, and that, I think that is.
I almost, if I almost had the impression when I read this, is you should get an IP, there's a key.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not out of the system anymore. And then, you know, the fact that there's, you know, students with IPs that allow you to keep them on. Can I get that?
Yeah.
But it almost, you know, it almost seems to me that, you know, to help a student with IP, you know, for, you may be.
Making them dependent, yes.
And not giving them access to.
And that's exactly what, that's exactly what he said, is it, it, for all the right reasons, a student's providing an IP, but it can, it, the, the, higher they go, as they get into high school, it can in some cases handicap, handicap them, handcuff them, maybe, is a better way. Because they're, they're, they're not providing certain, it's not productive, right? They're not providing certain interventions that they need because the IP is written in a manner that doesn't allow for it. So either we should agree, make sure we write those in a manner that allows for the best possible interventions, or the intervention that the student most needs.
So are there some guidelines we could use?
Yeah, one of them, that's a, that's a good point, and one of the suggestions as well. I think just to Nancy's point about early intervention, I think it's important that with our child find process, and we want kids to get an early and often, that's, you know, preschool is part of our intervention program. So, you know, that's an important access point. We just don't want them to have an IP to get support, you know? And so that's the biggest shift in our system, that all kids have access to really high-quality reports and parents feel very very sure by, you know, watching their kids grow and get them up and out and get them to that over time and it quickly moves them to the system in most cases and like not lose sugar resources to these students that, you know, have other, other needs.
Chris, can I have one thing that might just kind of help me, it's a little nuanced language thing, but it's the idea of continuum of support. So it doesn't matter whether the student has an IP, whether the student's a language learner, whether they're a general ed person, we have this continuum of support that we can dial up and back for students who need it. So it's a changing of, well, if this student has an IP, they go to this room. Instead, it's about what services can we provide and then matchmaking for the students that need it. So it's just, it's a different way of thinking about how we provide support. I think about that with a lot of our English language learners too. Um, it's, it's thinking about, like, we might have in the past not had them work with the literacy specialists because they needed to learn more English. We learn now, provide it if that's what they need and do that matchmaking. So it's just, um, it's that idea of thinking of continuum of support and all students get what they need. So they can move up and down that continuum based on, based on the data that we have.
And it's situating all of our, our staff to feel compared, and more adults, always equal more learning. And so I think that has been our, our direct response, thanks, and support with great intentions. And I just think we have to make sure coordinated in all sectors and we have actions of really great success on that.
As he, you, the, I think, one of the elements that I think could be most challenging is kind of breaking this idea of my kids versus your kids, we're general ed versus special ed. Is there, did, is there a school he's worked with that has successfully done this?
Yeah, about four hundred, about forty. That was kind of the.
But I, I'm just wondering, is that, you know, should be sent some people on a field trip, you know, to see, to see it in action to understand? Because when you read the, the verbatims that he had in there among some of our special ed teachers and some more general ed teachers, there's definitely a, there's a sense that both sides feel like, what we're doing isn't perfect, like, you can do better, but I don't have the tools I need yet to, to make that happen. And I just thought, to me, I'm reading that going, that's a huge, that's a fundamental shift in how the adults think about this, so I don't know.
I appreciate, and we noted the last pieces of praise was about the lilliness.
Yeah, oh, I think there are people that are like, I just don't know how to execute it, you know?
Yeah, I think that's been our biggest question of, of, just on how to run our principals. Like, this, this sounds great, and I get stuck when it comes to these ten kids that need these ten things. And so being able to coordinate and that's where I think, having an outside perspective. And just like we've done everything else, get an outside person that's our, our expert and let's go see or let's read about, you know, we've, we've done this book study with principals and they feel excited that they want to know, like, how does it look?
Yeah, that's interesting, you either want to say, you go, yeah, that makes more sense.
So how does it go?
Especially at the secondary, I think the shift, the hardest, I think secondary is going to be hardest for that, for that shift. And we have asked him to share with us some examples of districts that have this at a high level.
So follow up with that, he does talk about also how, you know, support systems should be add-ons and not replacements or something. Does he also have examples of how any students can do that because we actually have the same amount of hours in a day?
Absolutely, yeah.
How does he suggest to add-on and not sub?
He's got a whole chapter in his book.
Yeah, exactly.
He actually draws it out and checks it out.
That's why he does look at the step schedule though, to offer us the outside kind of support specific to, you know, the mass specialist or, you know.
So is that something that can be invented here?
Absolutely, one, one step we took forward that last year is we, um, called it scheduling for equity, that's another chapter, and what we're talking about, we need to make sure we have a master schedule that all the building is adhering to. So if we have specialists pushing in or wanting to, we don't want them, one of our, kind of, piece of our framework is preserving that core. So we need some non-negotiables with principals about, we can't take them from the core instruction and it has to be added time, so that's where the puzzle starts coming in, where do you take them and that kind of thing.
So give me an example, how would they add time?
So they add time by taking them from, like, from that, you know, like, so they take them from social studies or, or science courses, things like that.
Still taking them, some of the course.
Sure, yes, but you can't take.
But the core.
His strategy is to preserve the core and keep.
So the specials would be taken, I mean, maybe not.
Sometimes, yeah, well, the, the group means as a team, it's important that it's a collaborative process and provide that time to our staff. So they'll get their data, you know, to be able to design an individual reading plan in case of reading for every single, every individual child that's little, right? Parents are part of that, and so that's what we've been working on structurally for the last nine years. So we, so the challenge now is not kind of reading, that he's reading, it needs to be an add-on, it needs to come from somewhere, which is always the debate of the day, so.
Yes, so a true push.
So the two questions, one is, I don't think it's a name for this right now, but, you know, clearly we need to circle back at some point with an update. Right, right. So you guys may have already a timeframe for that, but would you, I guess, what do you think would be, it could be six months, six to twelve months? But what do you think is a, is a realistic time period for us to get an update of, you know, what are our.
Do you feel like you need some schedule practice?
What are the, what plans are planned for that?
Yeah, so if we're already laid up, how are we gonna do it now?
So, like, we're challenging ourselves far before the end, obviously, to have a strong implementation plan. That's the part in process of now, so.
Kayla, do you? The end of the school year.
The end of the school year, so, okay.
We're committed to, we're committed to coming back with our, with our guiding coalition. So we've acknowledged this is a, this is a three-year plan. We're committed to coming back to the guiding coalition by the end of this, by, in April. And prioritizing our work into the fall. And so we talked about what, what's that mohang group? What are, how, how most time impact and easiest to do initially, begin.
But we'll get an update before the end of this school year to see what the, that would be okay.
So maybe, maybe potentially a field trip by November. Once you, if you're able, if you're implementing it like that, you're gonna see some of the changes, you know, if you're, if you're ready by then.
And then my second question is, you know, were there any of his recommendations or assessments that you particularly agree or disagree? I guess, like, maybe more interested in, you know.
Sure.
Were there any disagreements?
With the recommendations?
With, with recommendations from his assessment.
Um, from our group, I think there was a lot of how to, how to write this stuff that's.
So not, not his assessment?
But philosophically.
No, I don't think so at all. I, I think, I was, Nancy and I are having kind of a starting fire, just from our lens at, at district leadership. I very much appreciate some people kind of give the leadership of the district. And he's very intentional about, not as much the pedagogy, but the how-tos, like, how to communicate this, how to engage, how to talk with staff, that's the way that offers them a chance to kind of buy in and, um, I appreciate that perspective and this.
So I would, could you just mention the word communicate, I must have brought it up earlier? Because this is, I think, especially when it comes to literacy, it's a, it's a, for me at least, it's a more complex topic than something like math, or you understand the progression and all of that. You know, to figure out how we are communicating somebody's, and to our parents in the general. Just because, you know, there may or may not be mischaracterization or misunderstanding. You know, and and I'm new to, to, new word to, to this stuff as well, and so, I mean, that I did have an opportunity to, to kind of, you know, start in.
You referenced, you know, but I think part of his feedback was, you're doing really great things, but you need to, they're talking about it. You're only, you're clear and concise with everything stuff that you are doing.
Well, and even the language.
I think that's important.
Yeah, and even the language that that we still sometimes use, I think, with the work that we are actually doing, might be mischaracterizing it.
Right, sure.
So I think that's, I mean, that's now, I mean, guys, to figure out how we better reflect all the things we actually are providing to you and, you know. And I think, you know, clearly with this report, it's especially, you're also acknowledging some.
Sure, cause we have a lot of district requirements. Exactly, and how we're going to meet those. I think that's what I really appreciate about this part, is that it's just not admiring it. You know, really being challenged to think about how we're putting together an action plan and communicating that internally.
Part of the work today was, this morning was, why, what, how, where, you know, kind of a scenario. And one of the questions was communication. So building out what is that, who, who's, who needs to communicate, what are we going to say? How are we going to communicate that? So that's what was working, where we started this morning.
Does your, any additional thoughts about, he had a suggestion change the organizational structure between teaching and learning and special ed? I just, it wasn't a, some, what did your group think about that?
That was an area that, I think, kind of.
Restiration.
Yeah, it kind of, from my perspective, it kind of goes back to number five, where it says, for the purpose of alignment, kind of a loose type. And and what I take from that is, if this is about setting expectations, kind of non-negotiables across the organization, and what, what will, what will we do and what will we not do? Or what will we start doing, or what will we stop doing, kind of the scenario. And part of that is how we make, how we make decisions when it, when it comes to teaching and learning. And so that, that speaks directly to that, that piece, acknowledging that there's, there is a, there is a disparate commitment to, to, to teaching and learning. This is what it looks like at curricular level. This is what it looks like when ninety-nine percent of students have access to a, this curriculum. And these are the expectations from an assessment, from a professional learning standpoint and so forth. And then, and this is, there's an accountability structure that's built into that as well. Because we, in servicing all students, we make sure that we're pulling in the right direction. So that is going to require a bit of an adjustment, but in terms of making sure we hold everyone accountable to the board.
From, from your perspective, to execute this, do we need more resources or do we?
I don't think so.
I don't say that.
I don't feel that. That's, they're already chewing on their thumb right now, so I didn't know what the, but, but I mean, I mean, as you look at it, do you, but realistically, it's like, but that we have, it's not like teaching and learning isn't doing much, you know, right now. They've all got a lot on their plate, and I just think from a governance level, do we need to recognize that we need more resources? Or, or as we look at this, is that not something?
Yeah, no, I, I think we'll, we'll take a.
I'm not telling you, I'm just asking.
We'll take a, we'll take a, a, a look at what that, what that might look like. We, we are already looking at a, a restructure, a small restructure that would provide the split, a position, and provide someone whose, whose responsibility is to, is to help support that development. And then that is a, that's a whole that we have right now and so forth. And that's, that's one piece that we're looking at as part of another position. But certainly we'll keep, I mean, I know we are trying to roll out NTSS at secondary level, and it's like, this is almost, so a lot of this is the extension of that or being, doing, doing it thoroughly. But when, when we look at sort of the general instruction, teachers saying, I don't know how to service these kids, and the, and then the special ed teachers saying, I don't know how to teach this subject, because I don't have the subject. It's like, ooh, there's training involved there, you know, there, there's, there's coaching involved there. And it's like, do we have the capacity to have that coaching?
There's masters, but I answer, but I think that we think about right now where we currently are and how we break together all the different pieces. Is our biggest challenge for building folks that are sitting making this in the subject. So if you added another person at that table with a different lens, it's like, you know, there's a lot of.
Well, the only thing that this is, when it talks about ELD, special ed, regular ed, is you go.
There's a lot of places for kids to go.
A lot of silos, that geo-regional slide, a lot of silos, and maybe there's a way of reallocating people to reduce the silos or re, identify redundancies or.
I think there's a little opportunity to be learning and, and ultimately just a commitment to that grander why about how do we create better conditions for our friends and our staff. And in some cases, we're asking, we, we're asking, you know, unrealistic things in our staff to like, a research.
Well, that's, that's why I ask.
That's to learn, you know, five different curriculums and five different interventions, you know? And listening to some of them, that's, that's their reality. So just being mindful of what's realistic and what can be altered.
So following up on that, you mentioned that the building folks get overwhelmed with colleagues. So should there be more synergy in teaching and learning and special ed at the administrative level? So that building folks.
Yes. Yes, we're, and that is not any fault of anyone.
No, no.
No, no, it's not.
It's a rethinking of the process.
I do think that's important to say, though, you know, and that's the point here, it's just a matter of how the special ed world is so driven by compliance and there's a lot of, you know, a lot of things on fire, and we want to make sure we're starting to appropriately introduce.
So it's another problem, throwing stuff at the building folks and working together.
Right, exactly.
Together what is needed.
It was amazing to me to see or just, or special ed.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I've seen some of those.
I know.
Exploiting.
Yeah, that's what I mean by the compliance, yeah, it's a lot. And he has ninety percent unaccounted for time.
And I'm sure that we have a lot of stuff that's by fifteen to twenty.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, he's the same paragraph every opening. And then I kept reading, I'm like, I don't know if he does or not, I think he actually likes this here, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. So, um, we have a book, but I, I'm, he's, I suppose, so we'll talk about.
I do have some there, but others.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, do you want to do others? And then we'll talk about that one, because I've got some other stuff, there's rather than there, there's two, so, yeah. So, hey, Matt, you're over there, so.
I'm good.
Uh, so my, uh, my questions are class and scheduling related. And some of these, you know, are coming up now that I haven't come in there and, and talking to people and, and thinking about these things. So definitely not, I mean, we put the catalog, so it's not about what we're offering, but how we're offering it. So the first question I have, well, I may be over, but, um, going into the future is what of the classes that we offer, what is required by law? And what is it that we additionally require? So for example, my understanding is that, for example, by law, one semester of physical education would be required, and the second one would be district required as opposed to state required. So I would like to know, not next year when we're recording, but sometime sooner, you know, of the requirements that we have, which ones are the, will fulfill the state requirements and which are additionally required?
And, and Terry, can I ask that? We can talk about how many personal plans we have so that students are opting out of the second credit of gym or they're swapping out World History Two for something different, like.
Some classes are, I mean, how many of those?
Percentage?
How many of those district oppose requirements, the additional ones? Are we allowing students to, how many students are waiting out in that year? How many students wait out of, you know, if the second semester of gym is not required, how many are waiting out? If, uh, what, what is the second semester of World History, for example? If, if there are not state requirements in there, there's our requirement, but a lot of students might be waiting out of that so they can fit up the classes? Just so we, we really understand.
Is the goal to say maybe we shouldn't have that, that different priority? What is the goal?
Um, a couple of things. One is, uh.
Same question.
This is the goal. If it's not, if it's not required, then it's not required. If it's required, um, you know, to me, well, I want to fit in this different type of class, waiting me out of his, you know, second semester of World History, you know, for me, it would be like, if it's required, it's, it's required. Um, and so creating bespoke schedules to fit personal wants. One, there are families who are gonna feel the agency to ask so they can get a bespoke schedule for their child. There are gonna be a lot of families and people who are not gonna even know or understand that they can ask for this. Uh, and so, so, so that's, I guess, that's my one, um, that we want to.
I was gonna say, my, my thought is the activities. Like, if, if you, if we're weaving, for example, World History Two for a lot of students, then are we advertising that students can opt out of World History Two for something else? Or is it, I mean, and I, it's so just the idea that, um, to give people agency and equity, and then also, when we think about, if we have a student-driven schedule, like, if a student thinks, like, I really want to take AP art history, but I don't have room for a full year sc, full year class because I have to have World History Two, but World History Two's not required by the state, can they take this AP class instead of World Two and get the state-required history credit? And so just that idea of when we think about equity excellence, like, different pathways for students. Because my, can I tag out to this later? Because my, my thing that I wanted to bring up tonight is how, like, if we can get a better understanding of how the schools do scheduling? Because a couple of years ago, we had counselors come in and they talked about, like, when they meet with students and how they help them. And, and then I know part of the comment app is that, like, a counselor has to write some letters of recommendation in the comment app. And, like, Cassandra has never met with her counselor, not once. And so, um, to me, that's like, they're like, we meet with them, but she doesn't meet with them. And so she's ended up having to go to an AP to get stuff taken care of because counselors aren't available. And so, like, in this year, they were like, if you have questions on scheduling, maybe you could get some time with a counselor. Like, there's no proactive counseling going on right now. And, um, I think that it doesn't help the equity and then get students, um.
So your question's not really about scheduling, it's about the coun, counseling, that's why I'm saying.
Well, like, it's both. Like, what are we doing to make sure that kids have equitable scheduling so that they know what is actually available to them and what they need? And then how are our counselors living that out?
So for me, I might frame it differently. So like, my, 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 my two kind of big things that I'm looking at is, one, to really just figure out going forward, what are we required to offer, what are we additionally offering, how much of that is being waived? Because those are all, also steps that are being taken, somebody is taking the time to wait.
Yeah, you kind of raise an interest in part, which is either it matters and we're not waiting it, or it doesn't matter. And if it doesn't matter, do we go back to, like, because that's.
I think it's important that we, perhaps the board needs to do a little learning around what a personal curriculum is and how you qualify for it. Because we don't, we are, we don't just wait for requirements. You have to go through a process and you have to qualify for that process through a variety of.
No, no, and I understand that.
I think that learning, that part would be good.
Right. Um, yeah, but my question is a part of that would be, if something like World History Two is required, for me, there were almost, unless it's a non-man-made emergency, I can't figure out why we would invest the time, unless it's a student who needs additional support or all of these things. You know, because you have years of, so I think, but it, it's just to, to start, from my understanding. And then, so, so that's also a part of scheduling, right? Big picture, looking at scheduling. And then the other thing which I found interesting, but I need to also understand how much this is still happening or not, that there are, or there used to be in fact, year-long classes where students can be switched halfway through the year into Semester Two, not only get a different teacher, get a different hour. So my understanding was before this could happen, with a class like English, where Semester Two, you get a whole new teacher, a whole new classroom, a whole new hour, which, to me. Right, but it, that's a core class, right? And so I would like an understanding of what classes this actually, what year-long classes this is actually still allowed to happen? How many students has had? How many students has happens to? And have we thought about the fact that if so much is changing from semester to semester, you know, that can have an impact on learning disruption, anxiety also.
So, I mean, I think that must be for you.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So, over the course of the last four years, we've moved to, it's just called linking, linking Semester I and Semester II classes. And now, they school schedule each semester class as its own course code in order to grant the credit affiliated. So, they have to exist as separate entities, but we link them in scheduling. They used to, previously, prior to 2020, they were unlinked in order to provide kids with the maximum amount of opportunities in scheduling. So, to access electives and not lock them out of a certain hour. But we've spent a lot of time talking about the importance of connection and building relationships. And our staff is very supportive of that as well. So, all of our core classes get linked. So.
Are there any year-long classes that?
Well, if it happened to a student, if they're interrupted, like, something can interrupt something else, but the, the scheduler loads as a linkage. So.
Like the computer?
We tell the computer, right, we're scheduling, right? So, we're, we tell the computer, because we're scheduling 5,000, right, between those two schools. So, we tell the computer to link them, but the computer will sometimes not link them if there's a reason of an interruption.
Does the person then go and link them back?
No. So, but it's.
Why not?
The majority, because they're, they're linked unless there's, like, certain rules that allow it to unlink. So, those rules would be, like, if you are a music student and you have orchestra and you had something else that was interrupting something else for an elective. Typically, what happens is the counselors have conversations with students through that process. So, it's not a guaranteed process because it's, because there's always.
And I guess my question is, um.
There's a few more.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, is there a board action that you're, that you're hoping to get out of this? Or did you have an off-line conversation?
I don't know that it's an, I mean, I, I think it's, I think we need to understand if, if, if something like English or math is unlinked for a student, are they able to re-link it back? Because there might be students whose education is being disrupted throughout the year because of this unlocking. I mean, I went to high school and, you know, all of our year-long classes were year-long classes, so, you know.
So, the scheduling rule is to link them. So, the, the by and large rule that we run by is that it's linked for each semester. For our English classes, our math, our social studies that run for a year, our science.
I understand, but you said that the, the link can be broken for the students for whom it's broken if they were. Can they get the support to get it linked if they want it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's that whole conversation of, like, when kids get their schedules and they look at it and there's that exception or that situation where it's not linked. And then, you know, the conversation of it's not linked, maybe this will be, go back to that.
And it will be put in there?
Yeah.
So, so if we go back to your first area, do you, do you feel comfortable, you know what she's asking for?
Yes, I think, I think, to share that, I think, you know, to provide, maybe start with what are the state requirements for graduation? And then, in looking at those, you'll naturally see which where ours is C, which is just a handful of areas. So, that, you know, it's from nineteen to twenty-two and a half, so we just have a couple. And then, I think we can start to learn a little bit about personal curriculum and how that is. You know, I think for the board to understand what that means to waive, we really don't have a waive process. We have a personal curriculum process.
And that's fine, and so that, you know, and I'm, you know, I think over time, sometimes more complexity can be built into a system which can also make it more efficient. So, it's, I, you know, maybe it's a. And I'm not saying that it's a bad idea. I, I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes that something that was implemented, you know, won't hold true. So, it, I, I think it's just worthwhile having that.
Well, the personal curriculum is guided to a state, right? So, that's the state guidance that we follow. And we, this team, have an opportunity to look at and talk about whether we think we're too, we're too broad in the options we have or too restrictive in the options we have. And that's, that's something that we need to certainly talk about.
So, you, you go, and then we should think of something like a policy. But, but, maybe.
I was just gonna add, if wasn't our campaign policy.
Oh, yeah, we're, we, yeah, I had a group conversation with the Torrey Community Coalition about that. And I've, um, we, at T Y A, and I thought we were moving ahead.
We do, we have direct policy. Okay, we gotta get a policy committee.
So, we do need a policy.
Yes.
We, okay. And before we get into that?
Um, I don't know if it needs to be proposed, or we need to get it back, so. We're on the track.
We have an implement, yeah, correct?
Correct, our, yours and Tom, and they're starting the schedule training.
We did the trainings. Okay, okay. Do you have a, like, a timeline for when you think will be, when it'll be available in the buildings?
Well, we can't create it in the building, it's a legal policy.
That's right. So, the training, how, I mean, is that a year or a word? Is that, I mean, like, when, when do you think we'll actually?
Let us get there.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
What we want, we need to.
Thanks, I forgot about that.
That's it.
I have a few reports, actually.
Okay.
I have queries, a couple of them, a few of them. One is, without hiring, are we pretty much filled with all our spots? Do we still have openings?
So, we've had a couple of, a couple of movements in the past couple of weeks, a couple of departures. And so, you'll, you'll be seeing some of those things going on on those as well, for sure, so.
Regular teachers, special ed?
Um, special ed.
And, um, do, do we have a backfill for candidates?
We do have.
We do not.
Temporary. We have, yeah, we have temporary, so, emergency.
Okay. And any update maybe of late high school starts, maybe when people do, like, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six?
I think it, it's on our, for next month, right? I think it's on our.
Is it on our agenda?
I think so.
First start.
Yeah.
It's on our agenda.
There.
Then we don't have to wait.
It's on what agenda?
I don't think it's, I think that might have been a holdover from the previous year. Yeah, I was gonna say, we covered that last April, so I believe it's, it's.
So, maybe we put it on April.
We post.
Is there anything to put it on?
Well, we, where are we at with hiring through, uh, where do we look at groups of our driver staff right now? Or fully staffed?
Fully staffed for three, five teams.
We're not fully staffed.
We're still not fully staffed for five. Correct. That answers your question.
So, nothing for twenty-four, twenty-five, definitely?
After transportation, I expect.
How would you consider for twenty-five, twenty-six, when you look at it?
I mean, yeah, I think, I assume your effort to hire bus drivers is not going. So, if you somehow ended up with enough, if, and we could talk about.
I think you heard about it in the last morning, our efforts, so, you know.
Yeah.
If you recall.
You mean of the signing bonus, yes, I've heard that.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Mr. West, okay.
And that's how it happens.
Just the one thing that I, I know that you brought up, doing a talk with legislators and.
Oh, I'm gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got news on it.
Because when Paul was talking about the first, like, the decline first rates, it just, when we think about the state aid fund, like, if you're dividing the state aid fund among less children, because less children exist, there's.
You should get more per child.
You should get more per child. And so, I think we need to be talking about, it's not that the high is getting smaller, it's that the state aid fund is getting divided among fewer people. So, why are we not getting more, like, push?
So, Dr. Wilson, just to mention, there, there is a categorical, and there has been a declining involvement categorical in the last two months.
Well, I'm just, my issue is that if the state has a billion dollars and now they're providing a billion dollars for a thousand less kids, everyone should get fifty more dollars.
But instead, what they do is they pocket, they move that money other places and.
Right, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, anyway, I just was like, I think we need to, to tap into that.
I'll be tapping. I'll be tapping in a minute, okay.
That's, and then I, thanks, this guy, so, but I.
That was okay for me?
Okay, do you want to go? Uh, I don't, yeah, no, I don't have, yeah. Okay, so, I've got three things. I had a conversation with Dave Randles, the Open Schools Office, this morning, actually, I'll contact. I did send a note to him and last week, saying, okay, the governor went down on us in terms of our, our increase. And so, what do we do? Would we do a direct attack at the legislature? And he said, I'm so glad you sent me that, I don't think that's exactly what we're trying to do. So, he sent me, I don't know the time to read it. So, he's got some, some discussions, he's been having some discussions. He said that the most critical person in all of this is Senator Sarah Anthony. Have appropriations.
You want to comment?
And, yeah, I know, so he, he, and he was fully aware that there was connections there. So, but he has, basically, he's already developing a multi-promed approach. And he agreed that getting, getting a group to Lansing to talk to them. But he's got, I mean, when he, I, I, I sent a note and said, I don't know what I'm doing, you do, so tell me. And then he's like, okay, well, we've already got a vacations plan, we've got, you know, we want everybody across all the school systems to be writing their reps and their senators, we have material for that. So, it's a matter of laying out all the things we're gonna do between now and May to try to make sure that that, that we drive home the point that we, that we need to increase the school fund more than what they're recommending, more than what the governor's budget recommends. The other thing is, I sent him my favorite chart with the inflation adjusted. And he said, I have the same chart for the, for the school aid fund for the last twenty years. And I said, well, that's a perfect one-two punch, because I said, we can say, here's what you're doing at a state level and here's what it means to a district like us, you know, where it's like, well, we're, I think it's, is it fifty million? I think it's fifty, fifty million? Fifty million, yeah. So, yeah, you know, showing this translates into a fifty-million-dollar deficit for us, short fund, yeah. So, we're gonna connect with this guy tomorrow and kind of lay out, I'll, I'll read through this yet tonight. And then, we'll kind of talk about a strategy. And, because I said, you know, do you need us to tap into effective board members in other districts that we know that might be able to come with us, you know? And I said, on the other hand, sometimes a smaller group is better. And he said, yeah, we, we need to talk about that. So, but, but he agreed that, and the good news is that when he laid out, because I, when you look at the number of reps that are on the Education Commission, the committee, the number of reps who are on the Appropriations Committee and then the number of senators in both of those committees, like, couldn't go, you'd have to camp out in Lansing for a week to try to get off. There's some, especially appropriations are huge committees, there's, they're like twenty to twenty-five people. But he's, his feeling is, there are really no more than five people that we need to talk to, and really three. And really, the most critical person is Senator Anthony. So, so, he said, we, we need to have those conversations. So, anyway, he was, he was actually really, I think he was excited that someone else was. I think he thought he was in his office writing these things, going, not paying any attention. So, that's the first thing. Second thing is, were you able to get that parent letter to Rich? You said you were.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna talk to him about that.
Okay, all right, good, okay. So, there's a letter that you need to see. Okay, okay. We talked about it earlier, but I said, I wanted to make sure that you saw it. No, absolutely. Okay, and then, the last thing I want to talk about is, is, last year, when we were looking at the math curriculum, we had talked for, briefly, about, you know, different honors options and different ways to think about honors that, that up until now in the district, honors has been, you know, faster and more, right? As opposed to deeper. And I was thinking about, the MSU Honors College has a, is a really interesting program because any class in the university can be, you can get honors credit in it. And essentially, you talk to the professor and you work out, usually, it's a research project. It's something over and above that you can do. And it's depth, it's always depth, it's, it's, you know, you're gonna, there's more to it, but you, it's connecting concepts or taking the subject deeper. And I guess I would just say, I would love to kind of have some conversations around, is that a way that we can sort of scratch the honors itch for some of our parents? If, if there's a way, and I know when we talked with the, the math adoption last year, it was too hard to implement an entire new curriculum and then try to work this into on top of that. But if we have established curriculum and our, our teachers are comfortable with it, would it, is that something we might ever consider to, to be able to offer a framework for a student? You know, we, we have students who are so ambitious, who want to dig deeper. And I think about that, what the AP class, I don't remember the name of it, where it's like the personal, what is it? Seminar? And, and how much that students would love that? And I thought, you have students, especially at a high school level, who get into a particular subject and absolutely love that subject. And, you know, we, we don't have an ability to offer an honors option in every single subject or an honors section of everything, but, but it's a different philosophy. But, but I'll, I'll tell you, as an MSU student, I loved it. It was, it was a wonderful way to, to really dig deeper when you want to dig deeper and build relationships with, with instructors, so. So, I'm not looking for any answer there, I just wanted to throw the idea out to the university and see, you know, if we think about it, there might be an opportunity to, to help our community rethink what an honors option is.
And there's several courses.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know what the other universities handle it, but that was, like, MSU had some honors classes, but mostly, it was just, you go, well, I knew I needed two honors credits per year to get that H on the degree. So, it was like, okay, let's figure out what class, I'm gonna tack something on and then have a conversation about what that was like.
I'd have to look at that as well. When I went to the NSBA applications, there was a high school that does similar things. But it is, they're more like point system, honors points, and after you, it's similar to the, what you were talking about, which is they do either extra credit stuff or they do in-depth session in a particular class. And then they get these points. And then after a certain set of points or boot, you're considered in a, in a track, whatever it is that you call it.
So, you know, yeah, I hadn't even thought about it, like, in a particular honors track, but just the idea of any student who ever wants to go deep into something, but have an ability to.
But are you talking like project-based learning?
Yeah.
So, it's not just studying or taking.
No, 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 it would be, yeah. Now, at least everything, I mean, again, it could be anything. I'm just throwing it out as, you know, and it may be that if, if we're in ELA and we're looking at an honors option in, in ELA, in high school, it's, you know, you're gonna need to take three of the, the novels that you read this semester and do a compare-contrast against the major character, you know, and I'm making this up. But the idea of, but the idea of saying, you know, if, if we had some kind of a limited construct within a course, say, if you want the honors version of this course, you would add this on your own. Because the, the problem is, you, you don't, you can't do it so that you're heaping too much onto the teacher, right? So, it would have to be very self-directed. But can we have the niches of the world out there that will, you know, grab it, anything like that? So, anyway, just something I wanted to throw up to the women.
That's an interesting concept.
So, maybe have a conversation. Okay, so that's all I have. So, we're gonna, we went just a quick conversation on this, but I don't think, you know, I think I just wanted to say. So. Is there anything else, am I doing anything else before Rick runs off the card?
Yeah.
Am I really?
Dismissed, yeah.
So, did, uh, did you have a chance?
For you.
So, yeah, and I mean, I didn't have an organized conversation. I, what I, I just felt like, let's get started, so I thought, okay, would we just get the first forty pages? But you may have noticed these words in front of us. And, and I, I, I'll tell you, I wanted to see what people thought, you know, it sort of, because he does get into more detail and you get into more of the research as he goes through it. But I put these out because I thought that his six illuminator elements were really interesting. And, and I thought, I had you to do these for us, because I thought, you know, I thought these were really good things for us to think about when we interact with each other, when we interact with anyone who comes to the table with us. And, and I had to do it on both sides, because I thought, it's important for us to think about our engagement, but also for anyone who comes to the table to know that this is our MO, right? Yeah, we're gonna come at you with, with these attributes, because these are the attributes that matter to us. So, you know, that's a group here. But, so, anyway, and that's why I threw this out here as a starting point. But I thought, I just was curious, what do people think so far, as you look at it, what, anything strike you?
I, I thought it was, at some point, he tells it, you know, he was involved to, to, to live in, in small, like, minded groups. And, you know, and, and you're a tribe and you're, you know, and so, you know, the way that we. way that we live today in these, in these multi-ethnic, multicultural, multi-religious societies is really a recent development.
Right.
And so, you know, how much of the way that, that we function is really built on this maybe way of, of living that was much longer, you know, to person way. And, and so we were, we never had to, it's, it's then learning how we really function in a world and, and communicate with people who are, who can now be vastly different from you and have vastly different perspectives.
Yeah.
So that, so that was interesting to me, and, and, and that makes sense to me. You know, even if you look at a city like Troy, I lived here 34, 35 years ago, it looks very different than it does today. And so if you lived in Troy in 1988, and, you know, the community looked, teacher, every, everything looked the same, and so it's, that, that was interesting to me.
Yeah, I liked when he was talking about that, where he said, you know, it's, I like the way he describes, as you have to approach a humble, right? I, I may not ever understand your experiences different, right? But I'm, but, but my goal is to be able to talk to you and to, to want to understand that, and have, and have you share that with me and gain some element of that experience for myself. And I thought that was, that was a compelling thing to, to, a way to talk about it. Yeah.
So, one thing that struck me, and actually I enjoyed it, I read the three chapters. It is an easy read. And it's, it's actually good coming from me, because a lot of things are harder to read, but I do like how he differentiates between an illuminator and a diminution. And it, and I actually saw many times myself in the diminution.
Oh, I did.
Oh, my God, so many times.
I think you're a very big diminution. No, I didn't. No, say, when you read it, you go, oh, oh, how many types of, I have that stuff.
Yes, yeah. And a lot of things. The thing that struck me the most in everything that he talked about was, we always tap people saying, oh, Nancy's a nice person, and Nicole is very friendly kind of thing. And then he talks about, there is no such thing as nice and friendly, and everything. In, every person is nice and bad at the same time, but you may be more nice and less bad, most of the time. But every person has all.
Possesses the whole.
The whole gamut and range of attributes, and you just need to be patient to see for what they are. And he also talks about how humanity is about seeing people for what they are, and not any more than that, which was surprising to me.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and seeing goes far beyond.
Physical, though, no.
Physical, or, or, he's talking about somewhere we got hung up where we thought everything was rational, right? And saying that you're missing an entire component of something, you're not actually seeing them if, if you're trying to reduce them to that.
Very good book. I'll continue reading.
Well, you ready?
Oh, yeah. You've been quiet tonight, so.
Been doing a lot of in, thinking and reflecting. Because in my first 25 years of career here in Troy, you make a judgment decision very fast, and you really have to. You can't drive around in a blue and white and accommodate a lot of people and love them, and you're going to get hurt.
Right.
But there's a lot of times you do have to listen. And being a listener in this realm here is far more important than, than making a judgment based upon a lot of, you're on your own when you're pushed, when you're pushing that little car, but when you're here, you're a team. And when you're a team, you listen to people, and you get the best and sometimes the opposite effect, but you, but you balance all that to be both respective and, or receptive and curious and understanding and being objective. And then it just melds into a system where you're becoming a better person, a more accommodating person, an understanding person, and bringing out, I think, the best. Even though you don't, I don't actively engage in a lot of conversation, you take all this into account, and you vote on the best objective results for the children and being an advocate for kids that I can be. And this is opening my eyes to a lot of things that I have experienced, both in the family and on the street, and at a board table for another 25 years.
I hadn't even thought of you reading this as a retired police officer. That's a whole other, you're in a domestic violence thing, you've got to be listening, you've got to try to find the humanity in everybody involved.
You've got to take all your senses. And there's a lot of downtime, too, but it's what they described as eight hours of calmness and 30 seconds of terror sometimes. But here, it's quite the opposite. You get the best of all different perspectives from people and citizens. You accommodate all that, you listen, you make what you think is the best decision at the time, based on recommendations, based on professionalism that comes from the opposite table over there, and you put it all together. Sometimes this happens in family life as well. It's not the easiest to experience what I have experienced in my family recently, but now I'm older and wiser, and I can see what's going on. There's pushes and pulls in a lot of areas that this book is trying to help to deal with. It's a lot of professional, I look at even the first 40 pages, it's kind of reflective counseling.
No, it is, right.
And that I have experienced, and it's helping me sort out a lot of problems that I'm going through. So this is a godsend, really, to a lot of things that both make up my history, my time at the board table, and my family life.
I think the thing that really resonated with me is the notion that whoever's the disrespecting somebody is.
Is your burden.
Is your burden, or making them invisible.
Yeah.
And, you know, as I reflect, you know, in multiple aspects of life, it is that, you know, kind of unwillingness to, you know, let, let people have their voice, that, you know, can be very, very demeaning. And I, I like the concept, I mean, I've read lots of different leadership training and such, the concept of, you know, people who bring out the best in you, and people who bring out the worst in you. And this notion, but I, I thought the way they frame the illuminators and the diminishers, I love those terminology, because I think it's, it's very easy, you know, for people, you know, that to resonate with people in the fact, again, I think the other thing that resonated with me, you know, that Patel said, is, is you're not all or none. We all have degrees of this in us, and, you know, I think this gives an opportunity, you know, to really do some self-reflection, you know, in my interaction with my dimension someone else I believe in, you know?
And to go with that, too, is the idea that, I, I worry does is, you know, we get what we put out, so.
Yeah.
So, one person is not good or bad, and there's a spectrum, but also a part of that spectrum partially might depend on how you approach that person as well. So if you're warm and welcoming, they're going to react one way. If you're very formal and cold, you're going to get a different person, and you're going to judge them based on that reaction or that presentation, but the presentation is really a reflection of you, as opposed to necessarily them. So, so that's, that is interesting.
When you think about constituent relations, right?
Yeah.
How that plays out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he talks about sizing up and sizing down a person when you first visit, and I'm like, oh, my God, I do that so much. Importantly, we do that. I guess it's a human nature, maybe, but.
Yeah, because that's what makes this strike out to me, is that we all think we're more complicated than.
Yes.
We have access to our thoughts, so we just think everybody's more.
We're much deeper.
Yeah, exactly. So it's kind of a, you know, a, a.
Exactly. We just don't know them. They, they're very more complicated than us.
And I thought it was interesting that married couples, that the research says, as you, the longer you're married, the less you actually know them. Because you know them from, you first met them, and I thought, oh, I guess that's.
You lock them into place.
Yes, you are, and it's like, they're evolving, they're changing, this idea of, of.
Not after 52 years.
No, sure. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, it wasn't. Yeah, it's just a, it's just how, even though we know, we think we know people or know patterns, or we must care of individuals, but we always even have a complete picture of people unless we really get to know them and start asking questions. It's just interesting, there's a lot more work into it than.
The, after this next chapter, I think, is accompaniment, and, and that's, I found, we can talk about that later when people read that, but that was an area that I found really interested too about. It's kind of walking a mile in people's shoes, and why did some work feel like they do that? So, you know.
And guess what's driving her? I feel like the whole.
Yeah. He's funny, he's great, yes. He beats himself up, so I said.
Yeah.
It struck me, reading this and thinking, I mean, all the things that people put it out, but the, I think the challenge in board work and reading this book is like thinking, like one of the pieces of listening is listening without expectation. And I think that then questioning without, like, going back to that idea of like always having passive intent, and yet also when we ask questions or when we listen, we're usually listening for, like, well, what do you want, what to do with this, what do you want from me? And like, I think the, the danger of, so I think to be a good listener, the relationship can't be transactional. And yet, board work, it like, you have a role, and I have a role, like, there is, like, there are transactions. And so I think that, that invitation or the opportunity vocabulary you want to use is the, how to find that balance of like really listening with, with the best of intent, listening with the intention to illuminate, listening with good recip, you know, receptivity, while also like having good expectations and, you know, and like, but having, you know, curiosity with expectation, like, like living in that nuance of the both. And so I appreciate how much he invites nuance. I love the line, that we want to train our imagination in the art of seeing others. Like, I thought that was such a beautiful line. But also just like being really mindful that, like, the hats that we wear sometimes make it, we can't pretend that it's not complicated.
Right. To some extent, you're finding it is transactional, and it's not an, it's not a personal relationship. There's still some transactional component of it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so how do you do, right?
How do you do that well?
Right.
Because I aspire to be, to be known as more illuminator than.
That's why I put the signs up, because I'm like, all right, well, I think, because I think what I liked about it, again, is that it's like, like, this is what I'm trying to do, but it's also setting expectations for anyone who approaches this book, right? It's like, there's, there's both halves of that.
So adding on to what you just said, all of that takes tremendous amount of time. And he talks about that, right?
Right.
He talks about a situation when the therapist sits down and just patiently watches the mom and daughter, you know.
Duke it out.
Duke it out. And in the end, after hours of doing that, they figured out what was going wrong. The therapist didn't do anything, but at the same time.
That was all the time.
We don't have that time to do such a thing, so.
Yeah, and, and it made me think that, you know, I wanted to look at our golden ratio again and see how we set it up for someone who comes into the, to speak for the three minutes to make sure it's good, that we want to have a conversation with you, right? And say, here's what, this is a good way for you, if you want to get your information to record, but we, there are better ways to have this conversation, you know, and we're willing to do that with you.
Yeah, it's not a conducive way to.
Yeah, but, but it made me want to look at the sheet again and say, how do we actually set it up? And is there something we can do that's very friendly, that says, okay, you know, decently limits to what we're doing here, but, but we welcome you. And I know we have a thing, some which might follow, right? As we go through, and I just thought, even looking at the language on it, that I might take a look at it, take a crack at it, and throw it back at all of you and say what you think, to try to help people, because, you know, people come in, they think, we're going to have a conversation with you. And it's, you can't, can't do it here, but it doesn't mean we won't have a conversation.
Thank you for reading the book.
Yes, thank you.
So what do you want to do for next month? And I, like, I'm trying to, do you want to keep small chunks? Do you want to do a broader chunk for next month? I, I kind of like doing little chunks, like, and it's going to take some while to get through it, but, you know, you can always read ahead, but I thought.
How many do we have? How many chapters?
It, as you said, it is an easy read.
Seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Do you make, have you read all three parts yet or no?
Yeah, I, I read it before I bought, I had, had Judy buy it for me, because I wanted to make sure it was okay. So if I ever read it again, if we doesn't mind, I have the brain and the journals, so.
So the last book that we read, we only read part of it, because that was.
Which adapt.
That we read, and do you think that all of it is relevant to us?
No. I mean, I think you'll want to read all of it, it's, it is interesting, but if you want to think about what applies to us, it's really the first two parts probably are more, have a greater bearing.
Or if we read four through seven for next month. I would finish reading part one, I was going to suggest that, yeah.
Let's do that. Let's do that, yeah, we'll do that. Okay, so we'll go, we'll go through the end of part one.
Part one, okay.
For, for.
And then probably her two, we can do it, May.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Good, I'm glad people liked it, because I, I liked it, I thought, are they going to come in and yell at me, go, why are you making me eat this?
No, I have to tell you, so before, this was like three or four years ago, at some point, you guys were doing mindset, and that was a book, and then I, I mean, clearly I was on the board at the time, but I bought that book for myself, and I, it, it was, anyway, it wasn't like a Nobel Prize winning, you know, virtue, but it, but it's, but there, there's a lot of really useful things in there that helped me see myself, see my kids, and I think even today make me a better communicator on the board because of that book. So I, I think that this is, these are the type of things that are kind of have a multi-level, they can have a multi-level impact of, you know, personal, professional, and then, you know.
We, we read, a couple of years ago, we read American Like Me by America Ferrera. And those are just personal essays of immigrants and a lot of LGBTQ immigrants as well. And again, there's no direct application other than.
Rodney, yes.
It's broadening, you're present, thinking about, and again, trying to get an inkblainer, what is that person's experience like in, in the world, you know? What did they go through, and to have, understanding humanity. So I do like to find books like this that are a little tangential, but footable. Okay. Well, thanks for sticking it out, even though we had to. True, just being much, okay. So we'll, we'll connect either tomorrow with Mr. Randle's, Thursday, Thursday, sorry.
Do we really need this book anymore?